I just have to move for the time a little bit. Okay? I will call to order the work session, the Willstone City Council of February 20th, 2025 at 5:01 PM. I will start by asking council members to review the agenda and items of consent. Are there any comments? Okay. Are there any council concerns before we start our work session? No? Okay. We will move to the first item on the pre-council work session agenda, Tourism Development Strategy. Ms. Monburt?
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Zoe Monburt. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager and the Staff Liaison to our Tourism Promotion Committee. And with me this evening are Matthew Langkampfer and Greg Netzer, and they are of Whereabouts. They are the consultant that we've hired for our updated Tourism Development Strategy. Before I turn it over to Whereabout to give you a walkthrough of where we are with this strategy, I did want to provide some brief background information. So as noted in your staff report, our original Tourism Development Strategy was adopted by the previous city councilor, a previous city council, in 2014. And that was developed after we worked together with a 17-member volunteer advisory board, as well as seeking input from the committee, to put that together. That original strategy had 49 action items, and we've made considerable progress. Attachment two in your staff report walked through what we've been able to achieve with the existing strategy. In addition, our community has grown and the tourism landscape overall has changed quite a bit. The COVID-19 pandemic changed a lot of what we do. We had the World of Speed, business closed, restaurants have changed, and we also had the addition of the Hilton Garden Inn. So that's really changed our tourism landscape and led to this project. So in 2013, the Tourism Promotion Committee decided it was time to update the strategy. So they added this into their five-year action plan, one-year implementation plan, that was approved by City Council. And with that, we have gotten to where we are today. Matthew and Greg will go through a little bit more background on how we got to where we are with the strategy in front of you as that's walkthrough in the beginning of the document. So I am going to stop talking and hand it over to you all.
Okay, thank you, Zoe. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us back to talk through this draft plan. We're excited to share this with you and hear your feedback. I'm going to get the screen going here. There we go. I think we're going to have Greg start with the timeline, give you a little bit of background of how we got to this point, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, absolutely. Good afternoon, and thank you for having us. We started this process a year ago, last January. Actually, had our initial conversations with Zoe and Mark Ottnan at the end of 2023. We have, as you can see on the timeline that's up here, we've had multiple interactions with the Tourism Promotion Committee as we've gone through this process. And we, it's one of the very first things we did last February, talked to them about what our plans were, how we were going to approach putting this strategy together. We had about a three-to-four-month period of time from kind of late February, March, all the way through June. That was a significant amount of stakeholder engagement. We did a number of one-on-one surveys. We put out a survey to the community, I'm sorry, one-on-one interviews, a survey to the community. We had a couple of small focus groups. We did a lot of background reading on not only previous tourism plans here, but the multiple plans that your city has put together around things such as the Town Center, the Parks Master Plan, et cetera, to try to understand where this might fit within the context of all those other plans. Toward the end of that engagement, that engagement section of our process, Matthew and I actually spent a weekend here in Wilsonville as tourists. And we did a kind of a secret shop for three days and visited a number of different restaurants, parks. We were overwhelmed with your parks, by the way. I'll just say that sort of off the cuff. And then made our, made a kind of an assessment based on a lot of the attractions and, why am I fumbling on the words here? The number of different assets we might see in other communities. We tried to understand where might we position Wilsonville in the broader context of what we see in other places and where we work. We put that together, all of that together in kind of a current state, what we call the current state analysis. We then presented that to Zoe and Mark and then to the committee itself. And that actually guided the work that we did in our planning sessions with the committee and a couple of community members in September and October, actually, August, September, October. No, even into November. Yeah, my gosh, it kind of stretched out for a while. Because so much of the work that we did recommend, which we'll go through here in a little bit, because so much of it necessitated connecting with partners throughout the region, we then took a little bit of a break and presented the work to tourism folks in Clackamas County and in Washington County to see if they could understand how they could see themselves partnering with Wilsonville and moving some of this work forward. We then came back to put together an entire draft strategy, which we then brought to the Tourism Promotion Committee, went through that in detail, made a number of different changes. And now we're here at the work session to kind of give you an update on all of that in as short a period of time as we can.
Before you move forward, I just have a really quick question to help me frame this.
Yes.
It says that you interviewed 10 individual stakeholders. Can you identify who those were?
I can, but not off the top of my head because it's been a number of months since we did.
Business, this mic is really...
They were, I mean, they were key stakeholders that Zoe and Mark helped us identify. So they were, some of them, I believe, were members of the Tourism Promotion Committee.
Some were the Prem Resisters Promotion Committee. Some were local restaurant hotel owners. I talked to the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I think, oh, we talked to the man who runs Bullwinkle's. That's the only, that's all, we tried to kind of spread it out as much as we could. Okay, does that suffice? Okay. One of the initial pieces of this strategy and any strategy that we put together is trying to establish a long-term vision. Since this is a 10-year destination strategy, we wanted to put together a vision for what we believe that what we and, I should say, our planning team, which is all local individuals, believed what a vision for Wilsonville in 2035 might be. We did a lot of work on that. And over the next two slides, I'll show you kind of the highlights of what that vision, what we feel that vision might look like. But the headline is what the bolded piece at the top of this slide is, that we're envisioning that, and I'm going to read it. "In 2035, Wilsonville is a city alive with a vibrant sense of community, culture, and heritage. Residents and visitors experience a city that is the model of an elevated regional culture, a welcoming, vital city that pays homage to its past and celebrates its future." We saw that playing out in a number of different places within this, within the community. Number one was seeing how it could become a walkable and thriving hub of visitor and resident activity. We saw another opportunity for more evening entertainment to emerge in different parts of the city. We also saw that there are a number of different things that the city could do to do, to attract family visitation. One of the keys to that obviously might be sports and sports tournaments, but another would be outdoor recreation. Since there's so much available so close, and Wilsonville is so close to the river, the outdoor recreation seemed like a natural thing to try to focus on. As it says right here, the Willamette River is more integrated into the Wilsonville experience. We talked quite a lot about ways to make it easier for residents and visitors alike to experience the river, be on the river, enjoy the river. There's a number of conversations we had around culture and heritage as well, both local heritage nearby and also creating new cultural activity within the city. When we started to talk about then, how we might help people who are visiting find all of these things that we're talking about, we started to think about tourism infrastructure. How can we think differently about giving visitors information? How can we think differently about wayfinding? How can we think differently about making it easier for people to move around the city? And then finally, we thought about ways to help grow Wilsonville's own ability to market that and to kind of strengthen the marketing program that Explore Wilsonville might put together. That kind of encapsulated this sort of 10-year brass ring that we envisioned and the committee envisioned.
Yeah, and I would add that the vision narrative is not meant to be predictive, but it is meant to be an inspirational description of what could happen as a way to sort of set a North Star for the project. Let's move on. Another key piece of this plan is the, what we call the Keys to Destination Evolution. And what we want to do is think about where Wilsonville is today, what you're trying to promote, which may be sort of where you're stretching to, and then where aspirationally we'd like the destination to be in 10 years. And I know the type on this is too small to see on the projection, but I'm going to talk through it here. Of course, my computer went to sleep. So you'll see the three columns there. The first is Family, Sports, and Recreation. The second is Friend Group Wine and Wellness. And the third is Business to Pleasure. And pleasure is sort of an ugly word, but it's useful in the industry. It's the blending of business and leisure travel, whether that's adding leisure days onto the end of a business trip or bringing a family along on a business trip or that sort of thing. We saw these as three verticals that can be leveraged in Wilsonville over time to create more of the sort of visitation that we desire. So in the foundational level, in Family, Sports, and Recreation, we've got two night stays for sports events. That's kind of where we are today. On the second column, we've got Wine Country Day Trips. People may come down here and pass through on their way to Wine Country. And then on the third column, Business to Pleasure, we may have single-night stays for pass-through leisure and business. What we're promoting for these days, what Explore Wilsonville is trying to market on the Family, Sports, and Recreation, expanding family visits to additional activities. We're trying to stretch those folks while they're here, do more stuff. On the Friend Group Wine and Wellness, we're trying to promote to single-night stays for wine country excursion, so more than a day trip, spend a night here in one of our hotels. And in Business to Pleasure, we're promoting business and pass-through travelers to engage more with the local economy beyond the hotels. So spend money in restaurants or retail establishments. Where we'd like all this to get to in 10 years, and this is sort of part of us building that North Star that all of the strategies move towards. For Family, Sports, and Recreation, we'd love to see it get to return visits for outdoor recreation without a tournament. So families have fallen in love with Wilsonville a little bit, and even though there isn't a tournament, they're coming back to recreate on the river or on the bike paths. For Friend Group Wine and Wellness, we would hope to get to multi-night stays for Wine and Wellness weekends, where maybe friend groups would come and stay for a couple nights. And then on Business to Pleasure, we might hope to get to return visits for multi-day events and remote work. So those folks aren't passing through as they are today, but they're coming and they're staying for a little while. So again, those are just meant to shape the thinking about what we can evolve, the sort of current state of the destination to over 10 years. And that leads us then to our objectives for the plan. And I'm going to go through a few of them and hand it back to Greg to go through a few more. Each of these objectives in the plan has a series of strategies built within it. We'll go through those. There are also measurable indicators of success that are baked into the plan. We chose not to go into that detail in the presentation, but it is in the packet that you received. So the first objective is to build destination management capacity and connections. The first is to build a destination ambassadorship toolkit to help businesses sort of understand better how they can inform visitors. Look at increasing the city TLT to augment and stabilize the marketing budget, increasing connections with partner DMOs, and this is, as Greg mentioned, with Explore Toallington Valley and Clackamas County Tourism, and also Travel Oregon, to better leverage Explore Wilsonville's ability to drive tourism. Explore, increase the Explore Wilsonville visibility at industry events such as Oregon Destinations Association Conference and that sort of thing, be more a part of that community. And determine the threshold at which a dedicated staff or separate organization is necessary. So this strategy isn't necessarily saying in 10 years you will have a separate entity from the city, like many communities do. But it is saying you're going to determine the threshold at which you might make that decision. Something that needs to be decided now, sort of like succession planning in a way. Our second objective, to accelerate sports and recreation. There's three strategies here. Evaluate needs and fund bicycle amenities. And there are, some of your neighboring communities have some too, so this can become part of the network. Identify and evaluate funding strategies for continued investment in park and outdoor sports facilities. This is part, one of the places where this plan dovetails with your city, existing city plans, just supporting that from the tourism perspective. And conducting a feasibility study for an indoor sports and entertainment complex with maybe an adjacent lodging facility. Again, dovetailing with the needs of parks and recreation here. Objective three, to nurture and attract impactful events. Events are a key tool that destinations use to both raise their profile and drive some overnight visitation. If they're done well and they're multi-day events, they can get people to spend the night. So the first strategy here is to identify and execute opportunities for funding events and festivals, especially with a focus on outdoor rec, cultural heritage, and automotive events, given the automotive history and industry in Wilsonville. Develop partnerships that help build a Wilsonville-specific signature event. A lot of communities have an event that's become synonymous with that place, like the Gilroy Garlic Festival in California. What could that be for Wilsonville? That's what that strategy is about. And developing a sorting criteria to prioritize investments in events and festivals. A lot of times, this is a challenge for a city, and we've done this several times, to help build a tool to make that decision on how to prioritize those funds that go to support events. Make sure that you're funding the ones that are the most impactful towards driving visitation. Objective four, enhance and elevate Willamette River access. So implement the elements of the Boone Ferry and Memorial Park Master Plans related to river access. This is essentially saying, hey, that's important for tourism too, and we'd like to see that move forward at pace if we can. Look for services for river activities, whether that's non-motorized watercraft rentals or guide services. Promote Wilsonville as a destination along that Willamette River Water Trail, which already exists, but become more of a part of that. And then look into tour boats such as Portland Spirit that could maybe have Wilsonville as a stop. I think I'll hand it over to Greg for objective five.
The next one was, couldn't have been more central to the work we did, was around Town Center development. And we know that that's a master plan that's already been approved and is part of conversations in the city. Our next objective was to invest in that plan, to advocate for implementation of other elements of that plan as appropriate for the development of other things that might draw visitors and visitation. There's several things as specific to that, but we all thought, also thought were very important. Incentivizing dining, our expansion of dining options, even making it easier for certain organizations to start their businesses, whether that's a food lab or a food cart, pod, whatever that might be. Also making sure that there were structured parking that was surrounded by commercial retail so that there could be an ease of access, ease of motor access, coupled with the walkable downtown center that really focuses on places to gather, trails, parks, and other public amenities that are already, and many of them which are already here. The next was really something that we felt very strongly about around access and transportation. Wilsonville is obviously very much, because of its location and how it was built, it's very, automobile is very central to the city. We wanted to try to point out that there's a number of different ways of access that also might be, that might help drive visitation, whether that's enabling bicycle rentals in and for much of the city, whether that's increasing smart services to different parts, not only to different places within the city, even like hotel drop-offs, drop-offs, but it even serves on weekends. Performing a destination accessibility audit was also something that we really, and the entire community felt was really important, to have a studied on about how accessible from a mobility standpoint certain parts of the city were and what the city might be able to do to improve that for anybody who might want to visit here. Also finding a way to make connections from PDX to Wilsonville easier than they already are. Is there some way to think about that differently? Is there some way we can help people get here more easily? Also as part of that is just continuing to build out the regional trail network. There's, there's so many of those trails nearby and around and continuing to connect them through Wilsonville. Made an awful lot of sense as far as different ways you could get in and out of the city. Another piece, and we find this is a very important driver of visitation, is arts and culture and finding a way to support the arts and culture ecosystem within Wilsonville. We did talk quite a bit about how a number of arts and culture nonprofits have struggled here in the last several years. So one idea, one strategy was to find a way to offer capacity-building resources to those organizations, to strengthen them, to strengthen their program, to strengthen their operations, to make them more, more able to drive the kind of... their operations, to make them more able to drive the kind of work that visitors and residents would like to see. Also exploring funding mechanisms for public art, 2D or 3D public art. A number of cities and counties have percent for art measures, for example, that we want to think about it. Also developing a mural policy and talking to private landowners to consider partnerships about how they might develop an easier way to create murals within the city, or even create a small mural festival, which would be kind of fun. And finally, do a feasibility study for a cultural arts center and theater. How feasible would that be? The eighth objective was around food and beverage, and how we could highlight what is here, take advantage of what's nearby, and also promote growing more from within. Since there's so many farms nearby and there's so many successful early-stage sort of farm-to-table operations, collaborating with local producers to enhance that seemed to make a lot of sense to ways that we can create very interesting dining options for people to enjoy. Also using the proximity to wine country in marketing to drive people to Wilsonville dining options. They're very close. All they need to know about is how to get here. Also felt like we should perform, recommend performing a gap analysis on food and beverage. What is here, what is, I suppose more specifically, what is missing that visitors and residents would like to see, and how might we find a way to promote the development of those kinds of organizations? Create relationships with local liquid tourism providers. Liquid tourism in quotes, that's wine, that's beer, that's tea, that's coffee, that's kombucha, and any number of different things. And so many organizations, retail spaces are built around those, and they draw people. People find them a great place to sit, to relax, to connect, to stop as they decide where else they're going to go in Wilsonville. The food cart pod or food hall, like I talked about a moment ago, that would be an opportunity to not only connect in a very small space, a number of different kinds of dining options, but also provide an easier entry into the market for people who are looking to establish dining or beverage businesses here within the city. And then finally, support.
You jumped out.
Oh, sorry, did I jump too fast?
Jumped for one more. There's one last one. Support development of a themed restaurant or bar that was specific to Wilsonville, that was owned by local Wilsonville residents, something that could be a real highlight for the city. Okay, now we'll go to the very last one. Finally, expand the lodging options and find a way to diversify them. We felt that an important thing to put at the top of this was doing an analysis of what the current lodging makes available. Who is it really for? What do people want to have? What are we missing? What might we want to build, or recommend building, I should say? We also really thought it would be important to evaluate the short-term rental opportunities. There aren't a lot right now, but if they're done correctly and they're licensed through the city, not only do they allow more opportunity for people, more people to stay, especially families, but they'll also drive the TLT as well. In fact, we went, thought about even creating a marketing toolkit to help make property owners, make it easier to start a short-term rental. There are other different sharing sites to use land for RVs camping, just like you might for Airbnb. Thought it would be a good idea to evaluate those opportunities, to see if that was something we could do. And then finally, recruit a family-friendly hotel and entertainment property, something along the lines of a Great Wolf Lodge. Maybe there's something that can be built onto Bullwinkle's. We don't know. But over the span of this plan, it felt like it would be an appropriate use of resources to try to investigate how you might build a big center of gravity like that that could draw families. So that's a lot that we understand that we went through in 25 minutes, which is even longer than we thought we would go. So with all of that and with what you have in front of you, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
And I'll just start going through based upon the pages in our packet in that report on the STRs. I believe because we're, we mostly are governed by HOAs in our city, that most of the HOAs do not allow STRs. So there's, that's a restriction in and of itself, so that would have to be reconsidered unless they're on the, yeah, outside of any of the HOA areas. And then also, it was pretty clear throughout that, yes, this was very aspirational, but the North Star, as you call it, was town center. And that implementation, we're already six years, almost six years out from when it was actually approved. And so we know that we're in a different economy, and there are conversations among council and the mayor that, you know, there may be some adjustments to that. Did you do a SWOT analysis on whether, whether or not the, you know, different variables like town center, what if town center doesn't come to fruition? What if we, you know, was there anything like that accomplished? Because this does feel very aspirational and hopeful it all goes well, and some really great ideas. And by the way, it's interesting you brought up Great Wolf Lodge, because when I was commuting back and forth to Seattle, you know, north of Centrilia is the Great Wolf Lodge, and that place was packed all the time. But you need, you need dollars and, you know, you need investment to be able to go there. And then also, let's see, Gilroy, California, and Leavenworth and all of that, those are great, but I don't know if those necessarily apply to us, like Leavenworth, that's a culture, that's our culture there. It's in the garlic festival in Gilroy. If you tie it to that mural festival, that was the one element that when I saw that, I thought, I don't know if anybody else is doing anything like that. To bring in some of the Portland families and things like that, to watch that as the murals are being built and things like that, I thought, wow, that's a really interesting idea. And I also didn't see, and this would have obviously been done in a SWOT, a lot of conversation about the fact that I-5 actually can be an impediment for us, because we are split by I-5. And also, if you add to that, you know, it's great that we have the Hilton Garden Inn now, but let's just cross our fingers and hope that individuals who are coming here to stay don't choose two of the motels, three of the motels in the city that would not necessarily leave a positive impression. And that's the majority of our motels. So I would really like to see that kind of thought through a little bit differently. And I know, you know, if we take this as it is, all well and good, but I think maybe that's us as a council to go in and take a look at that more closely and take a look at what we can take away from here, what is possible. It definitely generated a lot of ideas.
I don't know to what degree, those were questions versus, versus sort of a little bit of feedback that you wanted to give, but I would like to address the town center point at least. First of all, the current state analysis report that we put together is almost 100 pages long, and it really looked, that's the SWOT analysis. That was a deep dive on what the destination has and doesn't have, and where there are challenges. I-5 is one of those noted challenges, right? That's an obvious. The town center, having a center of gravity in a destination is super important. So that's, that's the ideal, and this plan advocates, you know, to participate in that going forward. If it didn't happen, that's not the end of the world. A lot of these other strategies could still happen, that family-friendly lodging establishment could still happen, whether or not town center did, right? The bike trails could still happen. But it would be a miss to not have that central place where people can go to. Part of what you have right now is a sort of diffuse destination, and there isn't a center.
Yeah, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find somebody who would disagree with you on that.
Sure.
I think what, you're talking about economic pressure, you're talking about, you know, making sure you've got developers that are willing to come in and do this, you're talking about, you know, funding available to be able to develop it out. And so, given the fact that it's 2025, you know, it is possible. It could all be in place by 2035, but, you know, it would be really interesting to take a look at and do kind of a stress test on it, and see if town center doesn't, doesn't come to fruition from a commercial standpoint for another six years or eight years or whatever, what else could we do, like you just said? What could we develop in the interim that would be valuable to the community and to, as we're looking forward?
Right.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So the town center plan is, it's written now, it's written out to be a 40-year plan. And we're looking at the next 10 years in this plan, and so I'm just trying to kind of take that into account and think, you know, as we're looking at this as a 10-year plan, I think, counting on town center, even if we were to start going after it tomorrow, we're not even a quarter of the way through that plan by the time that this, this plan expires. So I think, I think we need to be cautious about using that as our central piece for our 10-year plan for tourism. One of the things that came up, someone mentioned about tourism and something our town used to do, but it's gone by the wayside, is I think it was the Boone's Ferry Days, big two-week, you know, summer festival, attracted a lot of folks, and it's something that we used to do, and it's something that people fondly remember. And I think it would be worthwhile to really take another look at bringing that heritage of that, of our community back to it, and really kind of reintroducing that as possibly that main staple big event that we become known for again, hopefully. You mentioned parks. I think that's a huge, unique thing that we have in Wilsonville. It's, every time people ask me what's my favorite thing about Wilsonville, that's always the first one. I think another big one, and that goes along with the tourism, when we talk about getting people here and moving them around and all that, is we're very unique in that we have our own transit system. And we need to find, I think, a way to leverage that, to entice people to come here and be able to move about in the city and go out to other locations in the surrounding area. I went, I looked at the Explore Wilsonville site, and, you know, those itineraries, they don't just include just Wilsonville, there are the surrounding areas and partnerships with other communities. And having our own buses could be a fantastic way to make those itineraries happen and really draw people in and invite them into doing that without having to worry about driving, especially if we're talking about liquid tourism or something like that. Keep things safer as well. That's right. Yeah, and I think that's all I got for right now. Thank you.
Is, Lee, is your work done?
Not quite.
Not quite.
We, so after this meeting, we will go back to the Tourism Promotion Committee one more time. They will make a recommendation then before it comes to you. So you'll see a version.
Right. Do I have that right?
Yes. But the work, so the evaluating our existing plans, talking to stakeholders, talking to staff, talking to people in the tourism industry and our partners, that work has been done to get to this point and that kind of baseline of where we are and what we think we could achieve, and then that aspiration element, that was done with the Tourism Committee as well as our staff that know these, know our community, they've heard from you all, and they're very familiar with the Parks Plans, Town Center, Arts, Culture, and Heritage. So they were all a part of the development of this strategy.
So we could take this as somewhat of a baseline and start to take a look at those sections that we go, okay, you know, and really kind of do our own mini SWOT analysis and develop out from there. And really take a look at, given, you know, certain vagaries of the economy, or, you know, some of the other things that may be happening that are outside of our control, what can we develop in, what could be focuses for development in the meantime?
Right.
That are somewhat like easy wins.
So you could, as a council, say that, because river access has been a big thing, even before I got here. So if you wanted to do something with Boone's Ferry Park, that could be a council goal to do a geo-bond to, and we have 10 acres of, on the advanced road, that could be, could be athletic complex of some kind, that could be a tourism generator. So there are things from this plan that you could take as a council to make a council goal.
That's what I was looking for.
So essentially, this is our blueprint, and we can pick and choose and shape it the best suit our.
Exactly. So there's a number of elements in here that could move forward depending on where our community is. I mean, a signature event would be amazing, but that would likely take partnerships. So you'll also notice throughout the plans, there's a lot of partnerships with different departments, different agencies, different groups within our community and surrounding areas. I'll also note that when we get to a point that we adopt this strategy, the Tourism Promotion Committee, which has seven community members, Councilor Barry is our ex officio council member, they sit down and they do a one-year implementation plan, five-year action plan every year. And generally, it relates back to the strategy. So once this is adopted, they'll go back through, they'll take the, you know, what was identified as phase one, phase two, phase three, and start looking at that phase one, what can we do there? And then that would be put into their next tourism, one-year implementation plan, five-year action plan. I will note that they are already going through their implementation plan for the next year, so we won't know exactly what they're going to work on in the next year. But that will generally come to annually, so you'll see what progress they're making, what they're targeting. And if that's something that the council wants the committee to shift, we can certainly do that, and that would be the time to shift that. And Councilor Barry can, excuse me, Council President Barry can provide that input at our meetings. I attend those meetings, so we can provide that information back to the committee as they're starting to craft that one-year implementation year, five-year action plan that will really break down what's in the plan on an annual basis.
I like the idea of building it into our goals, and really kind of taking it under consideration when we're doing our goal planning.
I would just throw out, it'd really be neat to have an international food festival in our community. I know I've been wanting that for years, so I'll just plug that. I'd be interested to know what the Chamber of Commerce has to say about that, and maybe you have something written, I didn't have a chance to look at this in detail. The other thing is, I'm assuming since this is done, is we're about completed? Are they finished with their process?
We still have documentation phase of finalizing the document is really what's left at this point.
At, you're convenient, I'd like to see the contract. I just wasn't on council, and the expense of that contract.
And so if you'd like that information, we can provide that to you. It's in there, one-year action plan, five-year implementation plan. We spent $50,000, is budgeted for this fiscal year, and $50,000 was budgeted in the last fiscal year. So up to $100,000 is budgeted. This all comes from TLT funds, so there's X amount that we anticipate each year, and with that, the committee will put in that one-year implementation year, five-year action plan, where they expect to spend those funds, and that will come to council for approval annually. And if we don't have the money, we don't spend the money.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions?
So I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've put forth in this report. When you go back to the vision, we've talked a lot about recreation and the beautiful parks that we have. I was hoping maybe we could consider on that first line where it says, "In 2035, Wilsonville's a city alive with vibrant sense of community, culture, recreation, and heritage."
Sorry, I'm sorry. We were trying to, the first page, Council President Barry, would you say that again?
So under your vision, the very first line, if we could incorporate recreation, because we do have beautiful parks here, and we do want to expand using the river, more bicycles and whatnot. So maybe we should, I know you had bullet points where you had recreation, but maybe we could just bump it up a little bit, or at least consider that.
Excellent idea. Thank you.
And on the international food festival, we could, if we were to go along that lines, maybe that would be something we could coordinate a little bit with our sister cities in Japan. And I know that they have some breweries for sake and food that they would probably love to, you know, promote here.
Absolutely. Would be lovely. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the second item on the pre-council work session agenda, Housing Our Future, with Kimberly Reibold and Daniel, or is Dan Pauly, or is he just, okay, didn't see him. Well, thank you. My glasses aren't working too well for distance, so I have to go like this. So, Daniel's a blur in the back. He's in the back.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and members of the City Council. My name is Kim Reibold. I am the City's Senior Planner. And tonight, I'm here to provide you with an update on the Housing Our Future project, and more specifically, the City's Housing Production Strategy. So, after a year of focused work, we're now at a key point in this project where we are ready to confirm which actions we will include in the City's Housing Production Strategy or HPS. Just as a quick reminder, this is a six-year action document that provides a framework for actions the city will commit to taking to help meet our identified housing needs. And so, with me tonight are Beth Goodman and Nicole Underwood from Aga Northwest. They are the consultant team helping us out with this project. And they will run through a short presentation where they're going to highlight some key project background for you, as well as some key requirements related to this work. And then we'll get into what the recommendations are for which actions we believe should be included in the HPS. And just for context, we've had conversations with the Project Task Force on this, and so a lot of what is moved forward in here is based on the conversations our project team had with the Project Task Force. So, a summary of these actions is included within your staff report with more details on the specific actions included in attachment to, to that staff report. So, at the end of this presentation, we will have an opportunity for you all to ask questions and provide your input on the recommendations, both on the recommendations as a whole and any specific implementation considerations you might have for these individual actions. Our goal tonight is to confirm with you which of the actions that have been evaluated will go into the HPS so that we can begin work on drafting that final HPS report. And we will bring that back before you add a work session in April. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Beth and Councilor Dunwell. Do you have a comment first?
I do. I want to preface to the council and officially, and go on the record that I appreciate the work that's being done by the task force. That being said, I believe that we are being backed into a corner between a rock and a hard place, and that the governor is not providing the state funding to allow anything more than just build, build, build and plan, plan, plan. We, we carry the burden as a city of having to meet all of the goals that are being asked, that we're being asked to fulfill without the funding from the state as it exists right now. And I believe that some of the work that's being done and that we're going to be asked to do will be to the detriment of other city priorities. And we negotiated on several of these, some of these actions, several of these actions that I believe that we would say were not ideal, but had to meet the framework that was provided to us by the state, because they have to be achievable within a certain amount of time. And it doesn't give us the flexibility and the ownership to be able to choose our own destiny as a city. And I, when I look at the data that's presented in the deck that's in the packet, it continually reaffirms that Wilsonville is already in a position where we've got a significant amount of rental housing. And we are far above and beyond some of our other cities in the area, and yet we're being held to the same standard as the rest of them. And so, I'm hopeful that the state will step up and will provide us more guidance, more flexibility to be able to implement some of the requirements from HB 2003. We're being asked to do a lot without the support of the state to get it done. So, thanks.
All right. And I, just before I do turn it over to Beth, I would reiterate that the recommendations, as we've outlined them in the staff report, we've taken a lot of thought and consideration into what we feel is feasible and achievable on the six-year horizon of this action plan. As we'll get into, there was a lot of discussion on some other actions that we aren't currently recommending and a lot of interest, and we share that interest. I think we are trying to be, making our recommendations realistic about funding and staff resource commitments that we have available to us in the next six years. And so, the recommended actions do reflect that. That being said, I think we, as we prepare the document, it will be helpful for us, particularly for some of the actions that we identify as potential future actions, to include what thoughts or feedback you have, because we do, we do still want to document these ideas and these thoughts within the report itself. So, keep that in the back of your mind as Beth walks through kind of a high level of the purpose and the recommendation of the actions. So, Beth, I will turn it over to you.
So, essentially, this is a blueprint that we need to get the infrastructure funding and the state's support in order to implement that.
Different actions will have different funding requirements, and we can talk about those specifically as it relates to some of the actions. Infrastructure funding is kind of always out there. When it comes to housing, a lot of the actions aren't necessarily dependent on infrastructure funding per se, but other funding that we would need as a city to really be able to support certain programs. And I think, Beth, maybe if we can highlight some of that on specific actions, that would be helpful.
Certainly. So, Kim's showing here our project schedule, which shows that we started this project in March 2024, but we actually started it about a year before that, developing the draft housing needs and capacity analysis, which we then had a pause in the middle of the project, waiting for grant funding to start for this project. So, what you've got in your packet on page 63 is a PowerPoint that shows the different housing needs and some considerations for Wilsonville. We weren't going through all of those in this meeting because that would take an hour or two to simply go through that information again. What we're focused on in this meeting is the strategies that we've identified through working with staff, our task force, and through a fair bit of public engagement to address unmet housing needs in Wilsonville, and we'll talk about those as we go through them. The project has to be wrapped up by June 2025, where you have an adoption-ready housing production strategy. So, on the next slide, please. So, a little project overview. As I mentioned, we did the housing needs and capacity analysis, which tells you a lot of information about things like buildable lands here in Wilsonville. So, where do you have vacant land that's not constrained, where development can happen? And how much capacity does that land have? And you know a lot about that already through things like your frog pond, frog pond planning. It also has a lot of information about the housing market and demographic and socioeconomic trends, including information about housing affordability. The report concluded that Wilsonville has enough land to accommodate expected growth over this next 20-year period. So, in this presentation tonight, we're focused on the housing production strategy, which really looks more at housing affordability challenges and other challenges about developing housing. So, don't just think in the housing production strategy that it's only building housing, it's also preserving existing housing that is affordable to allow people to live and work here. So, if we go on to this, once we're looking at the whole housing production strategy and all of the actions in it, and the actions that the city has already taken to address need for housing that's affordable, we have to evaluate all of that based on these bullet points here. So, are there opportunities for increased affordable homeownership and affordable rental housing? Avoiding gentrification or displacement and specifically, actions to increase housing stability? What are the housing options for residents experiencing homelessness? What are the city's actions to support people exiting from homelessness? Considerations of location of housing with affordable options within compact mixed-use areas. Looking at increasing housing choice and affordable options in safe neighborhoods with high-quality amenities. When you talk about high-quality amenities, you're talking about things like access to transit, housing that's nearer to jobs, housing where you can access services like grocery stores, medical services, that kind of thing. And then addressing fair housing issues, especially for federal and state-protected classes. And some of those protected classes that are really a focus here are, for instance, people with disabilities, people of color, low-income households. There's another of, a number of other groups that we're looking at. But we're focused because the HPS requires us to be on federal and state-protected classes and considerations of access to housing that is affordable for them.
So, Beth?
Yes, ma'am.
When you provided the extensive deck in the staff report?
Yes.
With all the data points?
Mm-hmm.
I see that, you know, we are already, we say have significantly large, greater number of rentals, you know, all of the other demographics that you show, but this housing production strategy and the requirements that are provided, that are put in place for us by the state, focus on affordable housing for the most part. Is that fair to say?
Well, I would say housing that's affordable across the income spectrum, especially housing that is affordable at or below 120% of median family income.
So, I was doing a little bit of research on my own, looking at what we already have in place for our per capita population. We already have, you know, Montebello, Raiden Garden, Charleston, Autumn Park, Ulla, that's coming online, Renaissance Court, Creekside Wood, and Woods, and there may be others. As a percentage of our overall rental housing, are we smack dab in the middle? Are we high? Are we low as far as affordable housing goes? I did not see that in the report.
So, you're looking at income-restricted affordable housing specifically, which is not the only type of affordable housing. You've also got housing that's affordable to low and middle-income households who don't qualify for affordable housing. So, are you smack in the middle? We haven't tried to evaluate that because it's a little hard to say.
And Beth, and this is what I'm having trouble squaring.
Yep.
If I look at Westland.
Mm-hmm. I know where you, honestly, I know where you're going.
You know exactly where I'm going.
Yeah.
And, and it, it, we are far and above, beyond some of the other communities, but we're, we're being held to the same standards as far as the, the increase. When, do you know what, or am I looking at this through the wrong lens?
Um, yes and no. So, all cities are being held to the standard of increasing access to housing that is affordable. And I use that phrase specifically because it's not just about housing that's affordable below 60% of median family income. It's not just income-restricted housing, it's also in that, that middle place. If you look in the packet on page 77 of the packet, you'll see a slide that is existing households by income level. And what it shows is that about 75% of Wilsonville's households have income that is at or below 120% of median family income. And so, that's income for a family of four of $140,000 or less. And that is the focus of the housing production strategy. So, at or below 120% of median family income. One of the pieces of that is households that are at or below 60% of median family income, which I can't quite do the math that quickly, but that is about 42% of your households.
Right. And I'm also looking at page 76, too. I think that's where you've got some of that breakdown?
Yes.
Which is a phenomenal slide. And this is where, this is where I'm struggling, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say because I could take up the entire presentation, as you all well know. It's a fact that the greatest accumulation of generational wealth?
Yes.
Is tied to homeownership.
Mm-hmm.
And when we are focusing on rentals versus homeownership, and I don't necessarily see that the state is providing us the funding to be able to get into where we can provide, you know, low-interest loans for down payments and things like that, CLTs, whatever it may be. And Clark County has that amazing program in place that they're promoting right now, where the state of Oregon has, has ponied up and are providing up to $60,000 in down payment and a 2% low-interest loan for first-time home buyers.
That would be excellent.
Exactly.
So, let me finish where, where I was going.
And I'm done, because I could go on forever, but that is the gist of what I'm saying is, we are not being provided the, the capital?
Yes, ma'am.
To be able to implement and, and make real what could be the most effective, one of the most effective strategies we could use to lift individuals out of a cycle of not being able to accumulate generational wealth and, and homeownership.
I have no disagreement with that at all. And in all honesty, some of the things that my firm, where we've had an opportunity to advocate for, is more funding for affordable housing of just exactly the type you're talking about, and more funding for infrastructure. So, getting your water, your wastewater, your stormwater, your transportation, that's the important word I was forgetting, getting all of that in place so that you can take your land that is buildable and potentially developable and have it develop with housing that's affordable at a mixture of incomes. The thing I wanted to mention is that we are completing this housing production strategy under the old rules. And the old rules didn't try to, well, let me say, the new rules, which are going into effect over this next couple of years, is holding cities like Westland to the same standard that they're holding cities like Wilsonville or Tiger, not Tigerd, I meant to go to Gresham, because we heard this exact thing when we did Gresham's Housing Production Strategy. And so, the new system, the ONA system, sets targets for cities, and it's really looking at these cities that haven't done the things that Wilsonville has done to try to level the playing field somewhat. But you don't have targets in this housing production strategy that you'll be held to the same way in six years when you do this again, that you will have targets and all of the other cities in the region will have targets. So, what you're describing is quite real.
Yeah, it feels like we're eating junk food. I mean, there's no nutrition in what we're doing. It's just the same thing.
I think it is much less than you, you could have, but I'm, I'm hopeful that there are things that you can do in here that can make a difference. But that, that's me being an optimist. So, I'll continue on.
I have a question. On, it's page 12 of the, I guess the slides, but it's page 74, on cost burden?
Yes, sir.
And I guess, you know, being how I look at things, it seems pretty convenient that it's exactly 19% of our community is 30% cost burden with housing cost, and another 19% or 50%. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what the data said, and it, it happens to be that it's 19 and 19%. If you look at the next slide on page 75, that breaks it down to owners and renters.
Understood. My, my question on the renters, when we're asking their rent, how are we getting that information? Are we getting that from the landlords? Are we getting it from?
Those are very good questions. So, all of this is based on census data. It's based on American Community Survey data, and it's self-reported. So, a household reports their income, and they also report their rent, including selected utilities like heat and electricity. Those are all into the, the calculations of cost burden. I think the- I think the rent calculations, I've generally understood that the rent calculations were better than the homeowner calculations. Because if I'm a renter, I know what I pay in rent generally. I know what I pay in electricity and heating.
See, I disagree. I, I want to understand more about the rent.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have members in the community that rent, and they have a rent number.
Yeah.
In the old days, when my family was renting, it was like a flat fee of $500. And there was a security deposit. But we have, as renters, they're having to pay mandatory additional expenses that are a garbage fee, where someone comes around and picks up the garbage. And even if they don't want someone to come around and pick up the garbage, they still have to pay it.
Right.
And parking. So is, are those numbers, because I consider that, that's rent that's added on top of that base number? Or is that utilities? Because I, I think there's a lot of hidden costs that aren't captured by self-reporting.
Right.
Because I think a renter is just gonna say, so my concern is that we have a higher margin of people that are dealing with cost burden than we're able to capture.
Ah, so what I will tell you is, the census asks a question, what do you pay in rent? Does that include utilities? If it doesn't include utilities, then it asks a separate question about what do you pay for utilities? I believe, and I cannot say for sure, but I believe that garbage collection is included in those basic utilities. I suspect that parking is not included in that.
Okay.
And so you may well have a higher percentage of households that are cost-burdened who rent than you're seeing here. But what we know is that these questions have been asked similarly across, you know, all, all of the cities in the US, all of the places in the US, and have been asked this way for a very long period of time. And so you can do some comparisons. So even if the data isn't perfect, which I'm positive it's not perfect, it's not, where it's off, it's off everywhere in a similar sort of way. So what we see is that more than 50% of your households are cost-burdened who are renters, and almost 30% are severely cost-burdened. And so if you think about being a renter and maybe you have income, I'll actually use my thing, maybe you have income of 80% of median family household for a household of four. Basically, your monthly housing costs that you can afford are $2,360 a month, and that includes those utilities. And I'm forgetting exactly where I was going there. Where I was going is that if you have that, that median household, or gosh, if you have a lower median household income and you're paying 30% of your income on housing costs, you're in more trouble than somebody who has a high income and is paying 30% of their, their income on housing costs. Because everybody has costs like food and clothing and transportation and, and all of those necessities. They may be more expensive for people who have higher incomes because they can afford to spend more on those things. But when you're looking at renter households, you know, a person who's a household that's, that's paying 30% of their income on rent is oftentimes in trouble, especially if they have young children who need daycare or anything like that. Perhaps I'm, I'm making your point for you.
That's okay. I think that my personal view is that we need less rentals because we already have too many. We need more middle housing to allow people to transition off those rentals. And I totally agree with Councilor Dunwell that my thoughts are ideal, but we don't have enough funding from Salem, then we're kinda stuck.
Certainly, and, and we'll talk about, we'll, we'll talk about some of the different options
Okay, thank you.
In a few minutes. So as we've been doing this work, we've been talking to people in Wilsonville, and we've talked with these kind of groups of people. And what we're hearing is the types of housing needs that you're seeing here. So for lower and middle-income households, they're looking for affordable rental housing and opportunities for homeownership that are affordable. And we know that there's few and far between affordable opportunities for homeownership. Renters are looking for well-maintained units and transparency in cost. And so sometimes what we're hearing is that the units aren't necessarily well enough maintained. I'm not going to go through all of these different groups because it would take me a half hour to get through this slide, but we're paying attention to these different needs and what we've heard, in addition to what we're seeing in the, in the data from the census and the data from other data sources. So the, what we're hearing from people who live here and from service providers who provide services to people who live here is important as well as the other data. So when we're selecting actions for the housing production strategy, we're doing this consistent with state rules. The housing production strategy for cities inside of the metro area is a six-year action plan. Your actions have to be implemented in six years. When you're thinking about what actions you can implement, you have to think about funding availability and adequacy of staffing. Those two issues are certainly ones that will come up in a few minutes as we look at the, the actions that have been under discussion. We've looked at, I don't know, I think we started off with a list of about 50 different actions. And when you think about how many actions can your staff accomplish over this next six years, I think the answer is certainly not 50 actions. So we've been working with staff and our advisory committee to, to narrow down those actions to focus on some of the most important issues and also the more achievable issues. Remember that the city can explore actions that are outside of the housing production strategy. There's nothing that says you can't do things that are in the HPS. So that's an important thing to consider. All right, so here's our recommended actions, along with something that kinda looks like a candy cane or sun rays to me. On the left-hand side, we've got the recommended actions, and I'll talk through those in a few moments. On the right-hand side, we've got the additional actions that aren't recommended for inclusion, and we'll talk about why in a few moments as well. So on the left-hand side, the Planning Work Program actions. Action A is about looking for land where you can redesignate or rezone it so that you allow more housing or a wider range of housing type, types on that land. That's something that your existing staff can certainly do, and maybe there's some opportunities that you haven't been thinking about. Of course, when you do that, you're doing that in concert and consideration with people like your landowners, your developers, listening to what they're saying. So remembering that all of these actions are ideas for doing things, and the actual details for all of those ideas are projects into themselves. So Action B is looking at opportunities for a wider variety of housing types. So one of the ideas is possibly about establishing a mix of housing requirements in targeted areas. So in some areas, do you want to require that you have at least one or two or three different housing types? Some cities do that. So you get a mixture of, say, single-family housing, maybe some duplex or triplex housing, maybe some townhouses. If you think veilleboise, it's very much like that kind of thing, and like what you're planning for in Frog Pond East and South. Looking at incentives to develop manufactured, prefabricated, or modular, modular housing. So manufactured housing is really different than the old double wides and single wides type housing. All of these things are housing that are built off-site, and they can be considerably less expensive because they're manufactured in a, a factory. And oftentimes, they're, they're very, they're still high-quality housing, and sometimes you can't tell the difference between that and what's called stick-built housing, housing that's built on-site. And then continuing to allow a mix of residential housing through your, your different residential zones. So again, some of this is work in your zoning code. Item number C is about administrative review. The way you do some of your administrative review now requires a, a public hearing. Well, now what you've got, you've got what are called clear and objective standards as a pathway to developing a lot of housing. Clear and objective standards mean that you set specific standards for things like setbacks or height limits, lot ratio, development ratio, that kind of thing. And so perhaps you don't need public hearings for those kind of housing developments. Maybe you want to keep public hearings more for things like planned unit development where you don't, where the developer is not going through the clear and objective standards. So removing the public hearing and processing them administratively, since you've already set out your standards for these kind of housing, that can save time, and it can save the developer basically some time.
To jump in on that for a moment, the packet here talks about that, if we were to implement that, that it would, it would also take away the opportunity for public input
Mm-hmm.
On these developments.
So that's not entirely accurate. Our current administrative review process does still have a public notice period, so we still do notify people in the same radius when we get any, like, class-two type of administrative review. So people can still submit written comment. What we often find, when we get this type of comment at the DRB, is when it relates to a clear and objective standard, per our code, you know, there's oftentimes not a lot that can be done to address that concern because it is a clear and objective standard. And so there still is opportunity for public comment, it's just not in a public hearing venue.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome.
Okay, and so item F is accessibility requirements. What this is, is accessibility for people with disabilities. So having housing that has, say, ramps or wider doorways to allow people with, with mobility disabilities. So looking at providing incentives in your development code to increase the number of units that comply with something like universal design standards or the lifelong housing certification. In Frog Pond East and South, you require a certain percentage of units to be adaptable or, we called it friendly, so friendly for people with disabilities. So you could also require that more broadly across the city or in specific areas to ensure that there's more development of housing that is accessible. And then item N is about preserving affordable, affordable housing. So that's housing that is already built, that was built, it's income-restricted housing. It was built with what are called low-income housing tax credits. Those tax credits expire. And so at the expiration date, does the owner of that structure choose to sell it, or do they look at getting, accessing new low-income housing tax credits and recapitalize it? So for instance, in Eugene, we had one of our bigger senior housing projects, the tax credits expired a few years ago, and the county, as well as the city, worked with the owners of that housing. They applied for new housing tax credits that will last 60 years, and they did a lot of work, a lot of renovation on the housing. So what this action really is, is about keeping track of your units that may be expiring in the next few years. Your Wideman Park is a 58-unit, income-restricted, multifamily structure that will have expiring tax credits in the next few years. So it's keeping an eye on that, working with the state, working with the owner of that to see what can be done to keep that as affordable housing. So those are the Planning Program actions. The Foundations for Future Actions. Action G is about the housing specialist. So to do a whole bunch of the other actions that we've got on the future housing program, you need staff to do these things. So this is about developing a position description and looking at funding sources to add staff who could essentially manage your housing program. Right now, your existing staff are, I will editorialize for a moment, but doing some pretty amazing things, but it's not sustainable over the long term.
Beth, can I address that really quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Very quickly, because we, just for counsel, we really wrestled with this one. Because you, you don't want to just arbitrarily add headcount, because you want to be, you always want to, we always want to be very thoughtful about budget. But the reality is, is some of the most impactful elements on, on some of those actions, given how, and, and I spoke with members of staff, given how stretched they are beyond what you would consider their typical job description, it would be virtually impossible to implement some of these without bringing in the additional headcount. That wasn't just something that we lightly, you know, added. Because if you look at the Community Land Trust, the Homebuyer Assistance, the Rental Housing Inspection Program, which is near and dear to my heart, with such a significant number of rentals in our community, and knowing that no one's minding, necessarily minding the store to make sure that you're, you know, there aren't black mold issues and some of the other issues that we can often find, particularly when, you know, whether it's a mom and pop or whether it's a REIT that owns it, are we, are they racing to the bottom while their tax credits expire and then they want to sell it down? Yeah, but it, 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 it holds a certain level of accountability. So I, I, I just want you all to know that when, as a, as a task force, we did not take that lightly, and I think Councilor Barry, you would agree with me on that. We had a significant amount of discussion about how that really was a critical element for us to be able to think forward.
And then I'll go over one last one, and then we'll pop over to the next slide for just a moment or two. So the last one is the Construction Excise Tax. And what that is, is a tax that the city can implement on newly-built housing. It can be up to 1%. It doesn't have to be a whole percent of the value of the housing, where the city collects that tax and uses it in part for incentives to support new development. And then there's a portion of it that can be used for any type of affordable housing when we're talking very broadly about affordable housing, not just income-restricted affordable housing. And then there's a, a piece that that can be used for administration. So Kim, if you go to the next slide briefly. This tells you a little bit about why these other actions are not recommended. I think the most important piece is the ones that are under the future housing program. The first three are really about affordable homeownership, and the last one is about making sure that your existing rental housing is in good condition. They're dependent on having both the CET, so you have some funds for it, and your housing specialist. The other actions on the right-hand side, I won't go into why we're not recommending them beyond what you've got here unless somebody has questions. So I think, Kim, if we go to the next slide?
And I just would add, before we get into the discussion questions, we did include some information on CET as a third attachment to your staff report. This was one, and that's just an excerpt from an appendix in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. Prior council did have some work sessions on CET, so if there is interest at some point, we do have that information available. There was some analysis done, just no specific action taken, but there has been some work on, on that topic.
So Kim, shall I hand it back over to you at this point?
Sure, sure. So where we're at right now, again, this list of actions here for the HPS, and I, I say that to make the distinction because, given the nature of the HPS, there are check-in points, there's a schedule we have to create, there's, unlike when we did the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan where we had the opportunity to be aspirational, and if we didn't fully implement something, it didn't really matter. There is a level of accountability here, and as Councilor Dunwell noted, the funding and the staff capacity are a couple of key components that if we, if we start those tasks now, we position ourselves in the future to be able to dig into those types of actions more readily. I think where we had some concerns about including them in this current HPS is that, you know, it, it can take a while to actually be in a vegetarian place to be able to add that new staff person. Likewise, if you do implement something like a CET to get a non-general fund, source of funds for housing activities, there takes, it takes some time for that to build up as well. And so, you know, doing that and implementing four actions that require that staffing and that funding is just probably not likely. I do think, though, because there was a lot of interest in those actions from the task force, as well as the Planning Commission when we talked to them previously, we are going to have some going to have some discussion about them in the HPS, knowing that we do have as part of the cycle with DLCD, a midpoint check-in where, you know, we can kind of assess where things are and make adjustments if needed. And so having those items queued up for potential future use, we think is helpful for us. And so what we're looking at right now is if you have any, you know, concerns about inclusion of these actions, anything that should be removed, added, because we're at a point in the project where we've got a deadline coming up and we want to make sure that to finalize the document, that we've got the right set of items. Likewise, any other implementations, considerations you would want us to have in the document, we're happy to hear those as well.
And DLCD is holding her feet to the fire on compliance with these, isn't that correct?
Can I, can I answer that one?
Yes.
So when you're, by including these actions in your HPS, what you're saying is we're going to make a good faith effort to do these actions. If at your midpoint review, you find you just weren't able to do one of the actions, then you're required to substitute another action that gets at the same unmet housing need. So yes and no, there's, I expect every city will have to substitute some actions.
That being said, I think from our point of view, we want to set ourselves up for success in the future and we want to be realistic about what we can do, knowing the constraints we have. And so while, you know, adjustments and, you know, as we go through the process, we'll figure out how we need to move forward with that. That being said, I think we want to be realistic and conservative about what we think we can accomplish, knowing that we have implemented housing actions before, we know the complexity that is involved and the time that's involved and the resources. So that's where our minds are at with this list of recommendations.
And just for the other, the new members of council, what has happened with Salem in requiring us to move forward on some of these elements? I think, I think it would be fair to say that representatives of the city, Wilsonville, were very active in making sure that DLCD heard our voice. It may not have made a difference in where all of this is headed, but we did not just sit back and allow it to happen. There were a lot of visits down to Salem, if I understand, and some testifying and things like that. But nevertheless, it went through, this is where we're at. And I believe that Kim and Beth and Nicole and all of the work that you've done, we've watched this as a task force and I think that you've done a phenomenal job of guiding us to something where we can, we can achieve, given the significance, constraints that we're under by the state.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
So just to make sure that I'm clear on this, going to page 88 and 89 of the packet, is it that we have to hit every one of those columns in some fashion? Affordable homeownership, affordable rental housing, stability housing, choice housing, location for housing and address homelessness?
Yes, so, and I would clarify that the rules, the state rules say proposed actions as well as existing. And so we believe strongly in the work that we've been doing as a city and, you know, we, we plan to tell that story and that's the direction we've been given from DLCD is if there's an ongoing action that isn't part of one of the new actions, but it meets a lot of these things, be sure to explain how that's happening and how that's ongoing. So the Voilo project being a great example, it was in process when we started, but a lot has transpired since we started this effort and we're hitting more of the areas than we thought we were going to be at that time. So articulating that in this report is something that will be important. So it's, and I don't think we said this in our presentation, but it's a really important point. It's not just about the new actions we select, it's also about existing actions that we're doing, hitting those points. So in sum, we need to demonstrate they're all being met.
For instance, homelessness, you can see that we've, we hit that really quickly as a task force, it's like, we've got that, we're not even going to touch it through the Safe Sleep and then the Metro Support of Housing Services. So you don't see that coming up in any of our actions as far as our recommendations. But the state will require us to show that there, that this is, this wasn't ignored. Correct?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think we've covered, we've kind of beaten it, but I mean, as a city, we've gone so far and above, above and beyond in housing. I looked at the numbers with our neighbors to the south, instead of going to the west land side, I looked for a different one. And in 2000, we were about 1,200 population apart and now we're almost 10,000 apart. We've grown and grown and grown and done so much over the last couple of decades and now here we are being asked to do more. I would, I don't think that this is the minimum that we could put forward in this, given what we've already done, what we're doing right now, I think that I would want to see us do as little as possible as the state demands of us. That's my take on it.
For my thoughts on this, I agree with the listed recommended actions. I don't see anything needs to be added or changed. I appreciate the hard work that you guys have done. I understand the constraints that we have with Salem. I'm very frustrated, I'll speak later tonight about it. I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
I think that the task force did a really good job and that we were really lucky to have, I thought the task force did a really good job, really thorough with the plan and that it was, we're, I'm really grateful that we have a great staff person that was leading it and an excellent consultant. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll see you in April.
Oh, wow. Well, you summarized them nicely.
Thank you so much, Kim.
Okay, the work session is adjourned. The city council will meet in executive session pursuant to Chapter 192, Section 660, Section 2F, exempt public records and/or as Chapter 192, Section 662, 2H, legal counsel litigation to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. There was an error in the agenda, we are not meeting in executive session under Chapter 192, Section 66, E2A, employment of public officers, employees and agents, that's strict. We'll take a five-minute break. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers.
This period was marked by the population growth rate of 1.5 million people year on year. The population grew by about 1.5 million in 1950s. In 1955, the population was at 1.5 million in 1960s. In 1970, the population was at 1.5 million in 1971. In 1975, the population was at 1.5 million in 1976. In 1980, the population was at 1.5 million in 1981. In 1985, the population was at 1.5 million in 1986. In 1988, the population was at 1.5 million in 1989. In 1993, the population was at 1.5 million in 1994. In 1998, the population was at 1.5 million in 1999. In 1999, the population was at 1.5 million in 1999. In 2004, the population was at 1.5 million in 2005. In 2006, the population was at 1.5 million in 2007. In 2008, the population was at 1.5 million in 2009. In 2011, the population was at 1.5 million in 2012. In 2013, the population was at 1.5 million in 2014. In 2015, the population was at 1.5 million in 2016. In 2018, the population was at 1.5 million in 2019. In 2020, the population was at 1.5 million in 2021. In 2022, the population was at 1.5 million in 2023. In 2024, the population was at 1.5 million in 2025. In 2026, the population was at 1.5 million in 2027. In 2028, the population was at 1.5 million in 2028. In 2029, the population was at 1.5 million in 2029. In 2030, the population was at 1.5 million in 2031. In 2032, the population was at 1.5 million in 2033. In 2034, the population was at 1.5 million in 2035. In 2036, the population was at 1.5 million in 2037. In 2038, the population was at 1.5 million in 2039. In 2040, the population was at 1.5 million in 2041. In 2042, the population was at 1.5 million in 2043. In 2044, the population was at 1.5 million in 2045. In 2046, the population was at 1.5 million in 2047. In 2048, the population was at 1.5 million in 2049. In 2050, the population was at 1.5 million in 2051. In 2052, the population was at 1.5 million in 2053. In 2054, the population was at 1.5 million in 2055. In 2056, the population was at 1.5 million in 2057. In 2058, the population was at 1.5 million in 2059. In 2060, the population was at 1.5 million in 2061. In 2062, the population was at 1.5 million in 2063. In 2064, the population was at 1.5 million in 2065. In 2066, the population was at 1.5 million in 2067. In 2068, the population was at 1.5 million in 2069. In 2070, the population was at 1.5 million in 2071. In 2072, the population was at 1.5 million in 2073. In 2074, the population was at 1.5 million in 2075. In 2076, the population was at 1.5 million in 2077. In 2078, the population was at 1.5 million in 2079. In 2080, the population was at 1.5 million in 2081. In 2082, the population was at 1.5 million in 2083. In 2084, the population was at 1.5 million in 2085. In 2086, the population was at 1.5 million in 2087. In 2088, the population was at 1.5 million in 2089. In 2090, the population was at 1.5 million in 2091. In 2092, the population was at 1.5 million in 2093. In 2094, the population was at 1.5 million in 2095. In 2096, the population was at 1.5 million in 2097. In 2098, the population was at 1.5 million in 2099. In 2100, the population was at 1.5 million in 2101. In 2102, the population was at 1.5 million in 2103. In 2104, the population was at 1.5 million in 2105. In 2106, the population was at 1.5 million in 2107. In 2108, the population was at 1.5 million in 2109. In 2110, the population was at 1.5 million in 2111. In 2112, the population was at 1.5 million in 2113. In 2114, the population was at 1.5 million in 2115. In 2116, the population was at 1.5 million in 2117. In 2118, the population was at 1.5 million in 2119. In 2120, the population was at 1.5 million in 2121. In 2122, the population was at 1.5 million in 2123. In 2124, the population was at 1.5 million in 2125. In 2126, the population was at 1.5 million in 2127. In 2128, the population was at 1.5 million in 2129. In 2130, the population was at 1.5 million in 2131. In 2132, the population was at 1.5 million in 2133. In 2134, the population was at 1.5 million in 2135. In 2136, the population was at 1.5 million in 2137. In 2138, the population was at 1.5 million in 2139. In 2140, the population was at 1.5 million in 2141. In 2142, the population was at 1.5 million in 2143. In 2144, the population was at 1.5 million in 2145. In 2146, the population was at 1.5 million in 2147. In 2148, the population was at 1.5 million in 2149. In 2150, the population was at 1.5 million in 2151. In 2152, the population was at 1.5 million in 2153. In 2154, the population was at 1.5 million in 2155. In 2156, the population was at 1.5 million in 2157. In 2158, the population was at 1.5 million in 2159. In 2160, the population was at 1.5 million in 2161. In 2162, the population was at 1.5 million in 2163. In 2164, the population was at 1.5 million in 2165. In 2166, the population was at 1.5 million in 2167. In 2168, the population was at 1.5 million in 2169. In 2170, the population was at 1.5 million in 2171. In 2172, the population was at 1.5 million in 2173. In 2174, the population was at 1.5 million in 2175. In 2176, the population was at 1.5 million in 2177. In 2178, the population was at 1.5 million in 2179. In 2180, the population was at 1.5 million in 2181. In 2182, the population was at 1.5 million in 2183. In 2184, the population was at 1.5 million in 2185. In 2186, the population was at 1.5 million in 2187. In 2188, the population was at 1.5 million in 2189. In 2190, the population was at 1.5 million in 2191. In 2192, the population was at 1.5 million in 2193. In 2194, the population was at 1.5 million in 2195. In 2196, the population was at 1.5 million in 2197. In 2198, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2200, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2201, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2202, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2203, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2204, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2205, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2206, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2207, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2208, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2209, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2210, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2211, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2212, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2213, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2214, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2215, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2216, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2217, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2218, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2219, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2220, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2221, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2222, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2223, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2224, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2225, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2226, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2227, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2228, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2229, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2230, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2231, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2232, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2233, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2234, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2235, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2236, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2237, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2238, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2239, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2240, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2241, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2242, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2243, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2244, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2245, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199. In 2246, the population was at 1.5 million in 2199.
I will call to order the works -- oh, excuse me. Shows you how tired I am. Just going to repeat about an hour's worth of work here. I call to order the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for February 20th, 2025 at 7:37 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Council President Berry?
Here.
Councilor Cunningham?
Here.
Councilor Dunwell?
Here.
Mayor O'Neill?
Here.
And Councilor Chevlin is excused.
Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, before we start, I just want to read the city council mission statement. "To protect and enhance Wilsonville's livability by providing quality service to ensure a safe, attractive, economically vital community while preserving our natural environment and heritage." Council President Berry, can I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
The motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it passes 5-0.
Four.
Oh, excuse me, 4-0. I want to kind of divert from my business. I heard that we have some scouts in the audience?
Yes.
Are they hiding somewhere or ...?
Yeah.
Okay. From Troops 194, 199, and 5194, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. It's my understanding that you're trying to get your citizens' community merit badge? Is that right?
Citizenship in the community, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And part of the requirements are to attend in person to something like this, a city council meeting?
That's a public meeting, that's the requirement, to attend in person.
Okay. And then you have to watch us have, discuss issues, and see different opinions, and kind of pick the opinion you like, and report later to your counselor on that?
Something like that. It's more of observing what takes place in a public meeting, and seeing what kind of issues are discussed, and kind of seeing what kind of teamwork, and also discourse that takes place, and how the community sees problems and issues for it, and how they plan to respond to that. That's kind of what we're here to observe.
That's great. I got that badge many, many years ago. I only made it, unfortunately, to Star Scout, I think. I couldn't make it to Life or Eagle, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. I hope everyone had a good President's Day holiday. I can't believe I'm stuck doing this again. "For the second city council meeting in a row, is the pleasure of this council to welcome a group of talented student athletes from Wilsonville High School to celebrate a job well done. In November, Wilsonville's Wildcats became just the third team in Oregon's 5A classification to win back-to-back state varsity football titles. Members of the Wilsonville High School football team saved their best for the playoffs. During the playoffs, the team defeated three of the four top-ranked teams, and the team concluded the season with a dominant 56-35 win over Mountain View to become just the third team ever to win two straight 5A titles." I think that deserves praise. I think that deserves praise. The city council wishes to congratulate Oregon's 5A Coach of the Year, Wilsonville Wildcats Football Coach Adam Gunther. We also congratulate Oregon's 5A Player of the Year, Quarterback Mark Weeperd. And we acknowledge all the Wildcats players, coaches, and student managers who contributed to this incredible season. We also recognize the teachers, parents, and guardians who helped put these young men in a position to succeed on and off the field. It all starts with home and at school. With that, I'll read the proclamation that details a few of the team's accomplishments, and then afterwards perhaps we'll hear from Coach Gunther. Here's the Wilsonville Wildcats Week proclamation. Whereas Wilsonville residents honor the faculty and administration of Wilsonville High School for providing a well-rounded education that includes extracurricular activities that aid in the development of life skills, and whereas the Wilsonville Wildcats varsity football team is representative of the high school's commitment to sportsmanship, excellence, and personal development, and whereas the 2024 Wildcats ended the season with six straight wins to finish with an overall record of 11 wins and just two losses. Two losses, that seems a lot. Sorry, just kidding, that was my editorial. And whereas Wilsonville's prolific offense was among the best in Oregon, averaging 429 yards and 40.3 points per game, and whereas the Wildcats outscored opponents 185 to 104 with wins over the number one, number two, and number four ranked teams during their four-game playoff run, and whereas 21 Wildcat players earned all-league recognition and 13 of those players earned all-state honors. Whereas the Wildcats boasted the Northwest Oregon Conferences, Offensive Player of the Year Mark Weeperd. Offensive Lineman of the Year Emmett Fee. Assistant Coach of the Year Ned Walls. As well as the Oregonians' 5A Coach of the Year Adam Gunther. And whereas Mark Weeperd, Oregon's 5A Player of the Year and Offensive Player of the Year threw for 3,811 yards, threw 51 touchdown passes, and ran for 12 touchdowns. Whereas Nick Crowley, his primary receiving target, caught 80 balls for 1,513 yards and 26 touchdowns to lead all wide receivers in the state of Oregon. I need a break, let alone water. Whereas Riddick Moulatar paced the Wildcats' defense in 119 tackles and eight sacks, finishing among the state's leaders in both categories. And whereas on Friday, November 29th, 2024, the Wildcats dominated previously undefeated Mountain View High School 56-35 in the OSAA 5A State Champions, excuse me, Championship, to become just the third team ever to win back-to-back 5A titles. And whereas the Wildcats displayed exemplary sportsmanship and boasted a cumulative GPA of 3.24 with 22 players designated scholar athletes. And whereas the team's success generated positive attention, excitement, and community pride while serving as an example and inspiration to the Wilsonville community. Now therefore, the Wilsonville City Council proclaims February 23rd through March 1st, 2025 as Wilsonville Wildcats Week. The Wilsonville City Council commends the passion, resilience, and sportsmanship demonstrated by Wilsonville High School students, parents, and community members. And we congratulate the members of the 2024 Wildcats varsity football team for winning the state championship. In witness thereof, we set our hands and caused the seal of the city of Wilsonville to be affixed this 20th day of February, 2025. Coach Gunther, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much for having us. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce Mark Weeperd. He's our quarterback, and he's going to speak on behalf of his teammates and the rest of the team.
Yeah, thank you all very much for having us. I think, just to say a little bit, I think that this team is just a reflection of the community and the support that we've had for so long, and you don't get to go back-to-back or make so many deep runs without a great coaching staff and a lot of people behind us, so from all the parents helping with a lot of, a lot of different things, but especially breakfast after games and just all that support and the community really coming together. And then everything that's funded, football's an expensive sport, and so we have a lot of people in here who have donated and been a big part of that. And then honestly, just to the coaching staff, like this all starts with them, especially to do it twice, it all, it all has to come from consistency in that department, and that has definitely been our coaching staff, so. This team has worked really hard, definitely been a brotherhood, brotherhood for a long time, it takes a lot of work. Football might be the most time-consuming sport out there, so just, uh, did it out to all you guys, and appreciate all the support for so long, so, thank you guys.
I got asked a question right after the game ended, it's like, and the reporter tried to get us to compare this team to years, teams of years past, and they're like, are you gonna, are you gonna miss this group of guys, and I think that's kind of a silly question. We've formed, we built a program over the last 15 years here in Wilsonville that every team has its own unique abilities, their own personality, and this team here has cemented their, their, their history within the program. We always say, once you're a Wildcat, you're always a Wildcat. And the only thing I was gonna miss about him was not being able to go out the next Monday and get to practice again. I'd like to share something real quick, uh, these guys are gonna roll their eyes at me, I know they will, but, but nobody outside of these football players have heard this before, so I'm gonna share it here, um, because I think it's really, really important. If you've been to a Wilsonville football game, you've seen the guys on the field wearing their, their equipment, wearing their uniforms, and wearing their helmet, and the helmet consists of three parts. Um, if you go to a Frochslaw game or one of our JV games, the kids, their helmets aren't decorated yet, they're just silver helmets. And when you get to the varsity level, there's three stages, and we sit down the day before a game, and we go through, it's a ritual, and only about, I mean, maybe 800 kids have done it in the history of the program. And we start with the stripes, the stripes go right down the middle, and that goes for things that you folks can't see, the folks in the community don't get to witness, because there's an old saying, you earn your stripes, you earn the right to be here. And at this level, these guys have all earned their stripes. Everybody sees the product that we put out on a Friday night, they see the games, they see how it, how it works, they see how everything clicks, but they don't see our, the hours of weight training, the conditioning, the studying, getting home from practice at nine o'clock at night and turning around and having to study till midnight for your AP government test the next day. They don't see, these guys, we, we tell them that you start being a Wildcat when you're in first, second, third grade, not when you hit high school. So through all those youth years all the way up, they've earned their stripes. People say football players get treated a little differently, and I agree, they do. We hold them to a higher standard. They have to, they have to abide by what our expectations are. They've earned their stripes to play the, play the game that we love. The other side of the helmet is their numbers on, on the right side. And every single kid in here, every single player in here plays the game for their own reasons. That number represents them, all the reasons that they've put together through the years, whatever it may be. And usually there's no two that are the same, that's what makes the game so fun. But most importantly is the W on the other side, and that's the community. That's representing, being aware that you're playing for something bigger than yourselves. You're a very small part of a big deal. And that W, when you go down the road and you see the W on the back of a car, you know that's one of your guys, one of your brothers that have gone through the same stuff you have, and there's a connection there that you don't even know. People, you go to, you go to a football game, it's not a football game. It's a, it's, if you haven't been to a Friday night, I encourage you, please come to a Friday night, it's a community event. At any point in time, we've got 3,000 people in the stands, and ranging in age from, I mean, little ones to 90 years old plus, and they're there for a reason. Wilsonville football isn't just an extracurricular event, it's a community event, and we couldn't do that without the support of all the parents in here, all the players, all the coaches, our administration is, is critical, and the community that stands behind, behind us lets us do what we do. And for that, these young men will be better husbands, fathers, employers, employees down the road, and for that I thank you, so, thank you very much.
Mayor? Go ahead, go ahead. I'd like to take a few minutes now to have the team members, staff, parents gather in front of.
Somehow we're gonna finagle all of you.
Just players and.
Just the players and coaches, yeah, not the, I didn't mean the entire audience, obviously. But if we could get the vertically enhanced players in the very back, and they, maybe the free safeties and cornerbacks can get, take a knee in front.
Come on up, let's go.
And then we're gonna get our city council, and so, we're gonna have our communications guy, Bill Evans, right there.
I'll let you start, guy. We got you back, so all they get on the field, get down.
Over there?
Yep.
Sticking out.
There's gonna be a lot of people here wanting to take pictures. At first, for the first 10 seconds or so, look at me, then I don't care where you look. All right, that way you're all looking in the same direction. One, two, three, four, now I'm gonna step out of the way and let the parents take pictures.
Thanks, y'all. Hey, gentlemen, hey, listen up, on the way out, they're gonna have more proclamation letters for you guys at the doors, make sure you grab them.
Yeah, make sure you grab the front door.
Great speech, maybe you should sit up there.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got, he's got, he's got, he's got the box, everybody.
I think I'm gonna stick around.
Appreciate you, though.
I'll stay to see if someone else is ready.
They're about to, they're about to.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, I know, it's to bring the camera.
I know, I didn't.
Yeah, I was going to say, I know, I didn't, I was like, oh, I didn't see you talking.
Yeah, yeah.
Honey, they're perfect.
Yeah, they won't be.
Is that dinner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that dinner?
Yeah.
I have to get that.
Amendment. City Manager Brian Crossgrove has done an outstanding job running our city for the past 14 years. While the city council is desirous of retaining him as our municipal corporation CEO for the next 100 years, unfortunately for us, he's letting us know that he plans to retire this year. To allow adequate time for the city council to complete a recruitment process, City Manager Crossgrove's offered to extend his employment agreement to December 31st, 2025. On behalf of council, myself, and my family and the community, we are very grateful for his service and for the next six months.
Okay, folks, the next matter on our agenda is the City Manager Employment Agreement Amendment. City Manager Brian Crossgrove has done an outstanding job running our city for the past 14 years. While the city council is desirous of retaining him as our municipal corporation CEO for the next 100 years. Unfortunately for us, he's letting us know that he plans to retire this year. To allow adequate time for the city council to complete a recruitment process, City Manager Crossgrove's offered to extend his employment agreement to December 31st, 2025. On behalf of council, myself, and my family and the community, we are very grateful for his service. And for the next six months, we will be reminding him how grateful we are. He has set a high bar, which is going to make a challenge for us to find a good replacement. I've gotten to know him as a citizen, as a community member, for the past 12 years. And I've never seen someone so professional, so helpful, and so patient, especially with a lawyer. And I really appreciate your service to our city. City Council President Barry, can I have a motion to amend the City Manager's employment agreement?
I move that we amend the City Manager's employment agreement.
Is there a, oh, sorry. Is there a second?
I second.
The motion to amend the City Manager's employment agreement has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes 4-0. Since our last city council meeting on February 3rd, I've had a few items to report on. Working with city staff, legislators, legislators and community members, I provided written testimony to various legislative committees on a number of bills on topics of interest to the city. I will say that this is where city council's adoption of a legislative agenda and specific set of 2025 legislative priorities is very helpful in screening the hundreds of bills now being heard by the Oregon Legislature. Testimony to date that I have submitted on behalf of the city includes the following. Testimony in opposition to Senate concurrent resolution 2 and in favor of the -1 amendment. This bill, as written, provided inaccurate information on the earthquake susceptibility of the Aurora State Airport. Testimony supporting House Bill 3011, which proposes to address a critical need to improve childcare availability that benefits both working families and business employers by funding childcare provider training and certifications. Testimony in support of House Bill 2947, which provides state funding support for an important public safety study of potential toxic PIFAs, chemicals in wastewater sludge applied to agricultural land fields. The city operates a wastewater treatment plant where sludge is applied to non-food crop farmers' fields, and we want to make sure that we're not creating a long-term problem. We're not aware of any industry in Wilsonville using PIFAs chemicals, but better safe than sorry. Testimony supporting House Bill 2411. The proposed legislation provides state funding support of industrial infrastructure that assists local governments to produce high-wage jobs benefiting the state and communities. Wilsonville is one of 12 jurisdictions across the state that has pre-qualified for potential state infrastructure project funding that advance development of a family wage industrial employment areas. Testimony in support of House Bill 2074, which proposes to extend the sunset or end the vertical housing development zone incentive program. This program encourages mixed-use commercial residential developments that produce more affordable housing opportunities. The city has adopted two vertical housing development zone areas, one in Town Center and one at the Villebois Village Center. In both of these areas, developers have indicated that building a mixed-use housing and retail commercial development is financially unfeasible without the vertical housing zone incentive. And finally, testimony in support of House Bill 3231 before the Joint Committee on Transportation. Here, we urge a study of an extension of the West commuter rail service to connect the Portland metro area and Salem-Kaiser metro area with a high-capacity transit alternative to automobile commuting on congested I-5. Turning to meetings, and I'm going to summarize these because there are a lot of them. Over the past couple of weeks, I've participated in a number of meetings, including meetings with local elected officials. I attended the Washington County Coordinating Committee, the Washington County Mayor's meeting with County Chair Catherine Harrington, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee Metro Subcommittee, and the French Prairie Forum. Believe it or not, I can summarize everything that was discussed in those meetings with some very simple, straightforward statements. The only thing discussed, really, was the distribution of limited monetary funds to address key infrastructure and transportation projects that have been in the pipeline for years. Concerns whether the legislature will be able to put together a transportation package, which has not yet materialized this legislative session. One big question is the unknowns concerning federal funds and whether there'll be any changes that could impact these projects, given what's happening in Washington. Attending these meetings is crucial for developing and maintaining relationships with the mayors and other leaders who serve on these committees, as they ultimately have helped over the years our community secure funding for needed projects. I've had one-on-one meetings with Senator Aaron Woods, State Representative Courtney Neuron, Clackamas County Commissioner Paul Savas, Clackamas County Sheriff Angela Brandenburg, and UnderSheriff Jesse Ashby, Fire Chief Derek Weiss with Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, and Representatives of the Wilsonville Area Chamber of Commerce, where I've renewed a commitment to have meetings along with their board and the city manager and their CEO. That was a very helpful meeting. Further, I continue to meet and listen to constituents who have been extremely helpful for me to understand their perspectives. Notably, I attended with Representative Neuron a gathering of approximately 80 residents and business owners representing our Hispanic community. I listened to their concerns. It was an extremely helpful exchange. They are key to our community's success. My only regret is I never did learn Spanish, so I had to rely on some very good interpreting. The last item to note under Mayor's Business is the city council meeting is scheduled for, the next one is scheduled for Monday, March 3rd, starting at 7:00 PM. Okay, turning to communications, I guess we have nothing tonight? Okay. Community input and announcements. I see there's no one that wants to speak, so we'll get to skip that, right? Oh, okay. I digress. We will move now to community input and announcements portion of the city council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning cities' business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also the time to address items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, As a reminder, when you begin, your comments, state your name for the record and state your address or state that your address is provided on the speaker card. Please note, that is not the only way to communicate with council or me. You are welcome to submit information in writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other councils to discuss your concerns further. Okay, with that, I will call Elizabeth Peters.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Elizabeth Peters, and my address is on file. During the election, my campaign hosted seven open town halls, in person and via Zoom. These were small group discussions between 2 and 15 people each, a total of 37 people with a broad range of political views, belief systems, ages, and genders. A detailed record of all the sessions are in a handout I'm going to provide for you. We asked, we simply asked, what do you like about Wilsonville? And what could we better, what could be better? And we recorded them on flip charts. So, here's what we heard. The top three things we like. Number one, I can fulfill basic needs nearby, grocery, bank, post office, et cetera. Number two, the people and the sense of community, friendliness, and family. And number three, we're a suburb with a small-town feel. We're not urban. We're separate from Portland. Now, the three, the top three, what could be better? Number one, lost small businesses and the difficulty of doing business here. Number two, engagement and the city's connection with citizens. And I can see you working on that even now. Number three, bureaucracy and poor communication. Now, there's no blame or finger pointing here. Every staff member and every council member is doing the best job they can. So, where do we go with this? So, I do have the packet of recommendations to give you, things that are pretty easy to do, and I've already spoken with a couple of you about those things. I'm also happy to make this available to anybody who would like a copy. I'll email it to you. But for now, I just ask, let's imagine what our community would look like if we were to engage every citizen and business where they are? If we were to elevate our small-business friendliness and ease of doing business here? If we were to improve our two-way communication and surveys so every person knows how they're contributing to our community? Imagine what that would look like? We had a lot of fun listening and learning from this. And again, full details are in the handout. I encourage you to read the comments. There's so much to like about our community. And I believe these challenges can be overcome with the right approach and the will to change. Thank you.
Brad Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council people. And you'll notice I have a few people that have joined me here. We realize tonight was a special night to celebrate the high school state championship for the football team. Again, my name is Brad Christensen. My address is on file. And what I would share is that I've had the fortune of being involved in the football sport in high school, collegiately, playing professionally overseas. And I've just finished 11 years coaching youth football. This last season was a bit more challenging. And the reason that we're here today is to talk about a need for a replacement of the turf field at the stadium. And I know this would seem like it should be a district or a school district challenge. But I'm going to read a quick background as to where we're at. Our hope is that you're aware of the challenge, number one. Number two, there might be a task force that could be created to help us look at a funding mechanism to get this accomplished. And at minimum, as a father and coaching all these years, I felt it was negligent for me not to at least bring awareness to the rest of the city on this issue. So, without further ado, this past fall, we saw more youth injuries at the stadium, high school field, than the prior multiple years combined. Serious injuries that included broken arms, AC joint separation, and a hip, both broken hip and severely displaced because of the field. Not a tackle, but because of the field. I'll read testimony from the parents who had that happen to their child. All these injuries were caused by the field under a tackle. Youth have more challenges with the compression than adults, so older boys don't generally have this as much because they are not fully developed. Their muscle tissue mass is not there. In addition, we had a few occasions of an ambulance, two on one day, that visited the field because of head injuries and concussions by the opposing team. We're actually at a place where opposing youth programs will not play us now at our stadium because of the field condition. This was, again, all at the youth level, but there were also some high school injuries. I have Lou Crowley here with us tonight, who had a concussion from hitting the field this last year. Another player who couldn't make it tonight because he's ill has had two concussions because his head hit the field, not because of a tackle or a collision with another player, but because his head hit the field. Concerning is the state of the field. Going forward, both the youth and the high school athletes is recommended that the field service be replaced every 10 years. We're going into our 12th season with this football field. Although the field has passed its impact testing, the risk for injury is high. Our Touchdown Club, which is the group that supports the football team and district leadership, have met and confirmed the funds raised in the previous bond were deployed to the theater, the new Riverside High School, and Athie Creek Junior High. There currently is no capital available to do this work. Our operating funds at the district level are already short $15 million going into the next biennium year to support the school. The estimated budget to replace the turf field is $500,000, and that was provided to us today by an installer, so we have that as readily available information. There is a bond going for the voters this coming fall. And if passed, it has been suggested a new field service would be installed spring or summer of 2027. So, we're asking for another two years on the current surface. We have had both officials and coaches from other schools making reference to the risk. Combined with injuries suffered this past year, we are looking to the city to consider making this a priority and stepping in when the district cannot. Wilsonville Parks and Recreation participated in a turf installation when the varsity baseball field was installed years ago. The city dedicated some land to the district to build Meridian Creek Middle School with the plan of having the district install additional youth fields, which would be both soccer, baseball, and softball.
I'm sorry, but.
I'm out of time?
You're out of, yes.
Quite a bit.
But if you want to submit what you're reading to us, that would be helpful.
Would that be the best? And I've got other letters to obviously share, so I appreciate the attention. And our hope is, like I said, that there would be an opportunity for this group to build a task force to help us consider how we could do that.
And you're welcome to submit all those letters to us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Justin Brown.
Don't start my clock yet. It's my first time speaking in public, so I'm a little nervous, but, all right. Good evening, my name is Justin Brown. My address is on file. I'm currently in my second year as a member of the Wilsonville DEI Committee. With the national outcry against DEI, I wanted to address our community. I'm speaking for myself tonight, not the DEI Committee, not, I'm not speaking for the DEI Committee. Many of my childhood friends were immigrants from Southeast Asia. In middle school, my best friend's family had immigrated from Eritrea. We have maintained a diverse and close-knit group of friends and family from across the world. Together, we have worked hard to ensure that our children have greater opportunities than we had. Our group is united by mutual respect and understanding. There's no place for racism or bigotry within it, and we all share a deep sense of solidarity. Our diverse backgrounds include our political and social views. They do not divide us. In fact, oh, they, sorry, they do not divide us. In fact, some of us even, or some of them voted for Trump. We all live our own lives, shape our own unique experiences, and work together to better ourselves and those around us. I recognize that individuals may have vastly different experiences with race and opportunity. One of my friends, a white man, who has worked tirelessly for everything he's had. His family was poor growing up. He faced barriers such as a lack of grants available to him in college, and he struggled to find opportunities because of his inability to speak Spanish. In a world where diversity is prioritized in hiring and leadership, he sometimes feels overlooked or even discriminated against himself. To him, DEI in a form of action may feel unjust as he perceives himself to be judged by his race rather than the content of his character. When he questions those hiring practices, he's called racist. Similarly, consider one of them, one of my friends. He's a father, raised without his own father. He's worked super hard, you know, to raise his child and give them everything they need. The individual questions whether children should be subjected to irreversible medical procedures such as hormone treatments before they age to make significant decisions. When his concerns are dismissed as bigotry, it only deepens the divide. We must recognize that attacking those with different lived experiences only serves to alienate and often reinforces opposition. The most effective way to foster. The most effective way to foster change is through education and open dialogue. For instance, one of my neighbors expressed frustration over illegal immigration, unaware of the extensive history of US intervision in Latin American countries. I found that educating her about the context and history was more effective than simply condemning her views. As we prepare for our upcoming speaker series, which will highlight women in steam, a Facebook post about the event included community, oh, sorry, included a comment suggesting that these women only had their jobs due to DEI initiatives. However, showcasing successful role models who share similar backgrounds and experiences is vital for inspiring the next generation. I, for one, remember the profound impact seen Judge Sonia Sotomayor nominated to the Supreme Court as the first Puerto Rican person to hold such a prestigious position. She was the first non-entertainment Puerto Rican I had ever seen, and I was in my 30s. The Wilsonville DEI Committee is not focused on influencing hiring practices, but is dedicated to fostering and welcoming inclusive community. We believe in the power of education and representation to create meaningful change, and we will continue working towards that goal. Thank you.
Good evening, Wilsonville Council. My name is Stephen Hunter. My contact information is on the comment request form. Please take a moment to place today's planned terror attack in Tel Aviv at the top of your prayers. You have been presented with a recent list of illegal aliens who were released from jail in Washington and Oregon after the sanctuary jurisdictions refused to honor ICE, ERO, Seattle detainees. They were placed into our communities to reoffend. Were available, please take note of the number of prior removals. This, however, is not the topic of my presentation. I wish to clarify a misconception. This council has apparently assumed that by requesting elected officials follow the law, that this translates into being a mean and hateful individual. Nothing could be further from the truth. Safety of all persons is my concern. After last week's public comment period, this mayor took it upon himself to chastise for over 23 minutes citizens that pointed out the dangers posed to all the residents of Wilsonville when officials disregard immigration law. Ignored was the danger to our children with relevant examples. Ignored was the role Wilsonville plays in the international trade route of Interstate V when it comes to transportation of humans and contraband. I will suggest the mayor of Wilsonville could have saved a lot of time by discussing the fact of Wilsonville Resolution 2626. If you will note after the request at where to, whereas, and where therefore's, it all boils down to one sentence on page two, number two, and I quote, "In the event this resolution directly conflicts with either state or federal law, such directly conflicting state or federal law must control. The state of Oregon, having received and distributed federal funds, is subject to the latest federal law regarding immigration." I have great hope for this new council and the openness it is striving for, replacing the groupthink of the previous council. I hope this mayor is open and transparent with his clients in all aspects of law. I suggest he do the same with citizens of Wilsonville. Shalom.
Thank you. Deana Oakes.
My name's Deana Oakes, and my address is on the speaker card. I jotted this down fast today, so it's not great, but good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Congratulations to those of you who are new, and thank you for your service. I'm here tonight to address two things: urban renewal and the town center plan. Well, and one more thing now, go Cats. Before I begin, I would like to thank Mayor O'Neill, Councilors Cunningham and Dunwell. I've appreciated getting to know you and the time you've taken to have open conversations with me. I look forward to getting to know Councilors Chevlin and Barry better. In particular, Mayor O'Neill, I appreciate so many things you've said since elected. Your messages around transparency, unity, and open communication is much appreciated. Your words and actions show that you truly are a mayor for everyone. Thank you. I believe this council is in a unique position to bring people together, and I have faith that you will. When it comes to urban renewal, historically, our city has held a vote. I have heard it suggested that the city should move ahead without a new vote, ignoring the failed vote last May. Moving ahead to take on debt on behalf of taxpayers should not be taken lightly and should never happen without a vote and clear understanding by our voters. In regards to the town center plan, there's a lot of confusion. People are not aligned, I'm sure. I'm here to urge you to please set up a new task force made up of a multitude of people, all with different views. This task force must represent everyone and not only like-minded thinkers. Everyone who participates must understand that taking part in this comes with compromise because it's only with compromise and some mutual understanding that we can move forward. What will mend the city is if everyone feels heard. We should not add hyper density with no parking, but we should also accept and understand that change does need to happen. And so that brings me to my two questions I have for the members of council tonight. Will you commit to continuing with the historical mandate of allowing and hating a vote on urban renewal? And will you commit to a fair and balanced task force with diverse thoughts on town center? Thank you for your time.
Glenda Walls.
My name is Glenda Walls, and my address is on the speaker card. I've been a resident of Wilsonville for 29 years and have been deeply involved in the community. My husband Ned and I have raised our two boys here. Wilsonville has supported us in profound ways, especially during our teenage son John's five-year battle with aggressive leukemia. Sadly, he passed away, but memory lives on in this community. His football number, number 44, was retired, was retired by the high school, and his framed jersey along with his photo and story hangs in front of the gym. In addition, the John Walls Memorial Scholarship, sorry, administered by Wilsonville Sports continues to honor his impact. Wilsonville is a strong, caring, and truly special place. A year ago, I began following city decisions more closely to better understand Wilsonville's direction. I started attending city council and some development review board meetings, and I'm currently participating in the Wilsonville Civic Academy. Though I've never given a testimonial before, the last council meeting compelled me to share my concerns. I am a CPA with 29 years' experience, including 21 years running my own practice in Wilsonville. I understand how members, numbers, can be misrepresented, sometimes unintentionally, especially when people are passionate about an issue. At the last council meeting, I was shocked and concerned when a polling data for the climate action plan was presented. It stated that the percentage of Wilsonville residents who consider climate change important or very important rose from 76% to 88%. But when Councilor Adam Cunningham asked how many people participated in the most recent survey, the answer was just 16. How can an 88%, 88% approval rate be cited based on a sample size of only 16 people in a city of approximately 27,000? This raises broader concerns about how public input is gathered and represented in decision-making. Would it be possible to require presenters disclose upfront how many people participated in surveys and how they were selected? The city council has expressed the importance of transparency. How can that expectation be reinforced for those providing the data? Sorry, representation is also a concern in other city planning efforts. I've frequently heard residents ask how public input was gathered and how many people participated in the town center polling, yet I have not heard a clear answer. Why isn't this information easily available and shared? I've actively asked Wilsonville residents whether they participated in this process, and I've yet to find anyone who did. That doesn't mean they don't care. It means outreach needs to improve. Life is busy, and the voices heard most often are those who deeply engage in the issue. The real question is, how do you reach everyone else? I recognize that gathering public input is not easy, and some door to our outreach may already take place, but making it a more regular practice, one that involves meaningful conversations with residents, could provide a broader, more accurate reflection of our community's perspectives. More importantly, it would show that the city truly values and cares about residents' opinions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Kristy Cornow.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name's Kristy Cornow, and my address is on file. Salem may someday deliver the environmental outcomes they seek, but I fear they fail to see another outcome: further socio-economic divide in our community. Councilor Dunwell, you questioned the parking consultant at a work session, and you poked at something profound. He stated a current state policy: houses 750 square feet or smaller, households making less than 80% median income, and single occupancy residents are exempt from parking? My job takes me to Copenhagen, Denmark, about every three to four months, the bike capital of the world, Portland's dream city. They have an impressive transportation system: metro, trains, buses, bikes, high-speed rail, and I've used it all with this, you just load it up with money, tap, and you run around the city. And it's really great in nice weather, and if you're staying at the right hotel, and if you're not commuting to our office out in Rømby, about 20 minutes outside the city. I watch our chief officers and our Danish VPs drive out to our office, and I watch our lower-level employees taking about an over an hour commute. Although Copenhagen is viewed as an environmental model, it's the lower-level and lower-income people carrying the load. The elite never give up a privilege. In 2016, I saw a more extreme example in Haiti, their government driving around in large SUVs while their people live in mud huts, lucky if they own a moped. Imagine it's 2035, and a citizen is standing here at this podium frustrated because they are unable to own, use, or store a car. But what if they knew the council members owned a car? Wouldn't that just build like resentment towards their leadership? The Oregon State Constitution says in Article I, Bill of Rights, Section 20, "Equality of privileges and immunities for citizens. No law shall be passed granting to any citizens or class of citizens privileges or immunities which upon the same terms shall not equally belong to all citizens." Please fight against these injustices coming from the state. Owning, using, and storing a car is a privilege to be safeguarded, ensuring equality for everyone. Thanks for listening.
Hillary Townsend.
So my name is Hillary Townsend. My address is on the card. I'm a registered nurse, and I'm also a mom. In our household, we have five kids. They range from, we have nine, 13, 14, almost 16 and 17 right now. Two of my boys are here, while one, one's back there still, the youngest. Our oldest boy, he left earlier, he was here with the football team. So for the last two years, as a registered nurse, I've been asked to be the safety coordinator for the eighth-grade football team. Last year, seventh grade. This year, eighth grade. I'm here to kind of circle back to the points that Brad Christensen was making earlier. And the reason that I wanted to come up and do this is because of my, my medical background, because I'm the one that when the boys get hurt on the field, I'm the one on the field with them. I wanted to express to you the actual pain and suffering that our boys are being caused right now, starting at the youngest of levels. We've had, I think we had three concussions on the third, fourth grade team this year that I was the safety coordinator for. In one game on our eighth-grade team this year, we had what's called an acetabular fracture with a dislocation. So I don't know if you know what your acetabulum is, but it's a very, very strong bone that makes up a big portion of your pelvis. So basically, that boy hit the ground, had another boy land on top of him, and at that point in time, the ball of the femur pressed through the pelvis and broke it. The poor kid was screaming on the field. When I got out there, palpated his pelvis, you could tell his hip was dislocated. Now, I don't know if you guys know much about a 13 or 14-year-old, but you shouldn't have a dislocated hip, and it certainly shouldn't be because the foot is, or the hip is broken. In preparation for coming here tonight, I did a little bit more research to make sure that I wasn't gonna say anything that wasn't medically accurate, and that is a 1 in 100,000 chance. 1 in 100,000. And this poor boy was in agony on the field. It is typically referred to as what they, what they say, a high-energy injury. And what that means is it's typically a car, a motorcycle accident, or coming from a very high fall. Those are the only ways people typically break those hips, and it is typically never a pediatric patient. In that same, in that same game, I was on the sidelines with him, got called out to a shoulder fracture. Another boy had gotten landed on. Another game, we had a broken forearm with both radius and the ulna because as the kid was holding the ball for a kicker, another boy landed on him. That same game was that AC separation. There was another opposing team member for the eighth-grade team that, when I got to him and my other cohort got to him, he was completely unconscious. And when I say unconscious, I mean the child was completely out. That was one where we did call an ambulance, and it was around, it was either the same game or in the same week as another one where we got there a little bit early for our boys to prepare, and one of the boys on the opposing teams was completely unconscious, and that was another one where we had to call the ambulance. So I would just like you guys to really take a look at what Brad sends you and really look at the impact that it's having on our youth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors. My name is Chris Heideman. My address is on the card. My family and I have been residents of Wilsonville for, coming up on 10 years now. I want to speak on diversity, equity, and inclusion, particularly given what's going on in Washington. I'm prime, my, my views on this are primarily formed by having raised a deaf daughter. So she was born deaf through no fault of hers, through no fault of my family's, right? It's just a genetic anomaly. Nobody caused this. And so I want to, the diversity, equity, and inclusion, I want to talk about how if you do not support these things, then what you're really saying is that you're marginalizing everyone who wasn't born with the right capabilities, physical and mental capabilities, who wasn't born to the right family, with the right opportunities, in the right zip code. All of those things are just not important. And go ahead and say that if that's what you mean, right? But, but, you know, everybody, oh, DEI. All right, but let's say that we don't want diversity. Much less important than my daughter's life is my professional life, leading, as senior leadership in software teams. And in those teams, you need the diversity. You need the people who can enthusiastically get the project started. You need the people who can work the details, who know all You need the people who can work the details, who know all the technology, who can bring it home, who can talk about it to others. All of that is critical to an effective team, and so you need diversity of viewpoints. You don't just want all of those born in this zip code, who went to that school, who are of this age, of this race, if you like. Okay, so now I want to switch topics very briefly, use a little bit of time to talk about immigration. This obviously is very closely related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. A previous speaker talked about the role of the U.S. in causing the horrible conditions that these immigrants, illegal and otherwise, who have crossed the border illegally, caused them to think that it's a good idea to walk from Guatemala up through Central America, all the way through Mexico, only to know that they're going to face the wall here in, or the immigration authorities right here in the U.S. Still, that's the better choice than staying where they are, in part because of the things that the U.S. has done in the past. Final comment is that immigrants cause fewer crimes than American citizens. This has long been known. It's just obvious that you can research that. Thank you very much for your time.
Rick Wallace.
Hi, my name is Rick Wallace. My address is on the card. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I was invited by my sister and my nephew, who is one of the scouts here. And I wanted to say that I was a scout myself, and I actually was up here testifying in 2010, I think, as a scout to get my citizenship and the community merit badge. And at the time, I think Tim Knapp was the mayor and was overseeing the city council meeting. And then also, I was a football player. My sixth-grade football coach is here, Ned Walls, and I played freshman year as well, and my coach was Mike Nichols. And I do remember that that field was pretty hard, and I've been on it recently. My niece Sally is a cheerleader, and I think it's actually probably gotten worse since then. And then one other thing was I wanted to ask the city council, what did the quarterback say to the scout? Hike. And then, yeah. That's all I got. I'll end on that.
The mayor is speechless. John Vandenberg.
Hard act to follow, Rick. John Vandenberg, my address is of record. Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you so much for your service. I just want to speak briefly in support of DEI. My law firm has 60 attorneys and PhDs, and of rather diversity in terms of attorneys from Chinese background, Indian background, et cetera. And we have traditionally had DEI training, and the point of DEI training, the real takeaway that we got, was that differences are opportunities for learning. And we will no longer have DEI training, unfortunately, because we're a federal contractor, and we've been told not to have DEI training anymore. But you're not a federal contractor, and I hope the city stands its ground and continues with its DEI initiatives, and that you continue to learn from our differences. Thank you so much.
Carla Basheer.
Good evening. My name is Carla Basheer, and my address is on record. First of all, I want to thank Mayor O'Neill and Councilwoman Dunwell for attending recent DEI meetings in this 2025 New Year. I am the current chair of Wilsonville's DEI Committee. I was here a few months ago to address a different council on why our committee should be codified, which unanimously passed. Tonight, I didn't prepare to speak, so I'm more speaking in my capacity as a resident of Wilsonville and a mother of two boys who look like immigrants, as do I. I should also share that I work as an immigration attorney. I am deportation defense attorney. My work is very difficult as of lately, but we'll continue to fight the good fight. I decided to speak tonight after one of the speaker's comments on immigration, and I want to say that there's a lot of misinformation out there in media all over the place about immigration, and I welcome anyone who has any questions to attend one of our meetings, or you are welcome to seek me out personally, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the state of immigration in this country right now. What I wanted to say is that I think there are community members in the city of Wilsonville who are probably living in a lot of fear because of the current immigration laws and the political status of this country. I know some of them. Some of them have reached out to me from Wilsonville High School, and it's a hard reality to face, especially for children at Wilsonville High School, and I'm really sorry that they have to deal with that. But I'm also really proud of our community this evening and how many people have spoken in favor of DEI. That's not what I expected, and I'm just so proud to be a resident of this community, and I'm happy that I'm hearing that this evening. I'm speaking tonight to support DEI. We're going to continue to do our work regardless of what federal executive orders passed. And I'm also going to continue to speak because I hope that other people who might see this, either in the audience or on video, who look like me or look like immigrants, will feel the courage to speak and feel heard in our community. So thank you very much for listening.
Jason Smith.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for giving me some time here. My name is Jason Smith. My address is on the card that I handed in. I just wanted to speak today about DEI, about the city's efforts around DEI, the committee, but also maybe internal DEI work that you do as a government. In my professional capacity, I do a lot of DEI-related work. I've undergone a lot of training. I've been a part of a lot of committees that work around it. I'm currently co-chair of my company's DEI committee. I've seen the impact that this work can have on a company, and on workers, and on citizens. It's incredibly important for organizations to help them unlock talent, to help them maintain competitiveness, to unlock candidate pools that they would not have access to otherwise, to have policies that help people develop professionally, find opportunities where barriers have been in the past. And I just think it's incredibly valuable work, and I hope that you continue to do it. And I think that as DEI work comes under attack in the public sphere and in policy regards, I think a lot of the attacks will come in areas where it feels like maybe that work is not meaningful, maybe it's silly. There'll be a lot of examples that people will hear about. Many people don't know a lot about DEI, have probably heard most of what they do know about it from people who dislike it, and probably most of what they've heard have been cases where it's either manipulated, it's a bureaucratic mess, or it's causing harm. And I'm not going to say that those examples don't exist, and I think that it's really incumbent on you as people who are stewards of our community and of our money, of our policies, and of the outcomes that we all live under in this community, that you make sure you're doing a really good job around this work. There are a ton of very qualified professionals. There's a lot of really great work that needs to be done, but I think it's important, especially in government, that you do it well and that you do it in good faith. So I hope you'll do that. And then speaking briefly to the committee, I just think that our DEI committee is incredibly wonderful resource. I know that it is community-driven, that it was initiated at the request of community members in Wilsonville. I have attended a couple of the meetings just online, just calling in, haven't participated very heavily, but I just think it's a nice group of people that are trying to explore these topics, trying to expand inclusivity in our community. And you kind of notice it when you're in Wilsonville. I think we have a very pleasant town that we live in. It's incredibly diverse. There's so many working-class families here, so many people with various backgrounds, and I see them come out to events and stuff and just being in our city, and it feels very welcoming. I think that's very important. I appreciate it. My family appreciates it, and I think it makes Wilsonville a really wonderful place. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Brand Aratola.
Hello, Bren Aratola. My address is also on the card. I also wanted to touch on Brad Christensen's conversation about the football field, having three boys that have played on that field. My eighth-grade boy, one of the things that no one really brought up that I think is important to relate to a lot of what a lot of other people are saying here, is other teams are denying or will not play us on that field because of the injuries. And my eighth-grade boy is currently in private school at Horizon, and I chose to move him to Wilsonville this year because of the football program, because of what Coach Gunther builds and the community that it's built inside the football program. I have that ability to move my kid in and out of the school. The problem is, is the lower-income people do not. So what we're talking about by not replacing that field, not only will other teams not come play us, but we'll end up with the lowest-income people being the most affected because they'll continue to have to play on that field, and they'll be the ones suffering the injuries, the concussions, the fractured hips, the broken bones. I've never seen so many injuries, and the interesting part about all that is, every game, I went to every third- and fourth-grade game, every seventh- and eighth-grade game, and every high school game, the injuries didn't occur on the other fields. Every injury that she described occurred only on our field, playing the same sport. So if we don't do something about that field, what we're really saying is the youngest kids in our community don't matter, and the parents who have the means are going to say, I'm not going to let my kid, which I've already heard from multiple parents, I'm not going to let my kid play on that field. Those parents with the means will petition to move their kids out and/or send their kids to a private school where they won't get hurt, and the lowest-income families will be the ones that are affected the most. So I think it's really important to not just look at it from a football standpoint, but from a community standpoint of how important that field is. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Keenan.
Hello. I want to say I'm really pleased to hear all the support for DEI tonight, because that's what I want to talk about. I'm here to support those programs, and for those of you opposing them, I have to ask why. DEI is about more than diversity hires. It redefines our understanding of the world and the people we share it with. It benefits all of us, yes, all of us. We are all richer when everyone in our community is succeeding. When you exclude or marginalize a segment of the population by treating them poorly, they don't go away. They become your adversary instead of your friend. You lose their energy, their ideas, and their perspective on the world. Excluding them hurts you and them. Your world becomes smaller and a little less kind. Opening the door for a diverse population with people of different lived experiences enables conversation and communication and solutions and democracy. Denying that all persons should be treated equally decrees you are no longer a free and democratic society. You are something else entirely, something many of our forebears crossed an ocean to escape. There are those who say that DEI programs are flawed, not perfect, not doing what they're supposed to. I would counter with this. DEI is a starting point and has its flaws, but a program with flaws is better than no program at all. We need to keep working at it, bring all of our citizens inside the tent. We are stronger together than we are apart. Let's become the best version of ourselves and help every person in our community along the way. I encourage you to continue your support of DEI. Thank you.
Mary Clausen.
Good evening. I'm Mary Clausen. My address is on file. I've lived in Wilsonville since 2011. I want to talk a little bit in support of those who've already spoken tonight on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I applaud all of you for your comments. You make me very proud to be a resident here. In my work for a publishing company, I produce annual community and business magazines, and we work with such communities as Gresham, Beaverton, Tiger, Tuolotin, Sherwood. And I just want to point out something that I find fascinating and that it points to what we could have here in Wilsonville. Right now, I'm working on the annual Beaverton Business and Community Guide. I'm working with the chamber, the city manager, the economic development director, all of those for their annual magazine, and I can't tell you how wonderful it is to look through all their photos and editorial content about the diversity of their community. And before I go further, I just want to celebrate what the city has done, what this group of leaders has done, and the previous administration here has done. But Beaverton specifically has amazing festivals honoring their Indian culture, their Latino culture, so many, and that's something that I would like to see us aspire to, and it's just enriching their whole sense of community. And I lived in Beaverton, I moved there in 1990, when it wasn't that diverse, and it's a totally different place now. I've spent time there working on this magazine. So I just ask you all to share that vision of what all these communities and diversity and equity and cultures coming into Wilsonville, how they enrich us in so many ways, and look to what some of those festivals and other things are that other communities have right next door to us. Let's celebrate, let's continue to reinforce, and have a vision for really how enriched this community of Wilsonville can be. Thank you.
Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, we're now going to turn next on the agenda to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with council president Barry.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everybody that's attended our meeting tonight and express their viewpoints. I know that all the city council people sitting up here really appreciate hearing from you, and it is what makes our city really special. So I just want to highlight the last couple of weeks what I've been doing. On Wednesday, February 12th, councillor Chevlin and myself got to have a tour of a couple of the construction projects that are occurring in Wilsonville. So we went out with Chris Namsoo, the community development director, and Andrew Barrett, the Capitol Projects Engineering Manager. and Andrew Barrett, the Capital Projects Engineering Manager. We were really fortunate. It was Wednesday, the 12th. And if you remember, that was a really sunny, beautiful day. It was a little cold, but the next day it snowed really hard. So we were glad that we had gone out on that day. We took a look at the Beckman Dip Bridge. And I was really amazed that I had the opportunity to stand on the deck. They're making really great progress. That bridge, when it's completed, is going to increase safety, mobility for all the users. It's going to link schools, trails, and residential communities, safe passage for the pedestrians, the cyclists, and mass transit. And it's going to expand the road and sewer capacity for their frog pond neighborhoods. Then after that tour, we went over to the west side of town and got to take a look at the west side reservoir. This project is a 3 million gallon storage reservoir near the intersection of Southwest Two's Road and Southwest Baker Road. It's going to be built to modern seismic and operational standards and will have 3,000 linear feet of 24-inch water transmission line. So for me, because my background's urban planning, I love getting out in the field. And not only when we hear about a project and then staff comes and gives us a report or we read a report, but to actually get to go out in the field, especially with city staff, and have them share their enthusiasm and the details of what's going on. It just makes you appreciate how lucky we are here. I also sat in on the Metro C4 Subcommittee meeting the other day. Wednesday, February 19th, the mayor was our representative. They mostly talked about funding for transportation. But what I'd like to do while I'm sharing my thoughts with you is I'd like to shine the light on the good things that are happening in our community. We're really lucky that we have a lot of volunteers in the city of Wilsonville. For a while, I was on the library board in the Wilsonville Library Foundation. And one of the projects that they worked really hard on was bringing the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program to Wilsonville. It started with a gal named Jan Rippey. She had been on vacation and she was just talking to a stranger. And that stranger shared information about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And Jan is a retired teacher. And so she thought about it. And then she brought the idea to Pat Duke, who was our former library director and also with the Kiwanis. And they got the program going. And I don't know how many people know about it, but what's really special is that the foundation provides free books to every child within the city of Wilsonville from the age of birth to age of five years old. So every month, they get a free book. And if you start when you're a newborn and then you graduate the program at kindergarten or five years of age, you have a library of these books, 60 books. And so you get to spend time with your caregivers. You're learning language, bonding with people. When you have playmates, there'll be other children in the neighborhood who are reading the same books and then going to the schools, having that common, you know, things to talk about and to share. But I was thinking about that program because one of my family members had a baby not too long ago. And so she was really excited to sign up for this program because she's heard me talk about it for so many years. But now the program is expanding across the state. And this family member lives in Tuolleton. And so she was able to sign up for the program there. And then I was talking to one of my colleagues who lives in Beaverton. And now they have the program in Beaverton, too. So if you know people who have children from newborn to age five, go to the Dolly Parton website and look up your zip code and see if the books are available. And I really encourage you to sign up for the program. You'll receive a high-quality, age-appropriate book every single month. And it doesn't matter if you have one child in that age group in your household or if you have 10, like let's say you have lots of triplets and twins. Each child gets their own book. So I think that's really cool. So since the program started here in Wilsonville in 2012, the Library Foundation has raised money and distributed books. And they passed out over 1,000, well, almost 1,000. No, not 1,000, 105,000 books here in Wilsonville. And I think that's phenomenal. And now Wilsonville Foundation is partnering with Rotary. And the Rotary is sponsoring the program over at the Coffee Creek Facility. And so those children are also learning about reading and bonding with their caregivers and their family members. And over at Coffee Creek, there's 57 children and families that are signed up. I think that's really cool. And then just to highlight one more thing that the foundation does, they also have, one of the gals, her name's Burke Gar, and she's going over to Coffee Creek and leading a book club every single month. And I just think that's really cool, that there's a lot of really good people in the world, but here. So that's my story.
Councillor Dunwell?
In the interest of time in this late evening, first of all, thank you all for being here tonight. And I will defer on any updates for the meetings that I've attended. I did attend the DEI Committee meeting and the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee meeting. But I would just like to call out Mr. Cosgrove. I'm pleased that you are going to be staying with us a bit longer and you will be sorely missed.
Councillor Cunningham?
All right. So since last meeting on February 5th, I attended an eight-hour Elected Essentials training with the League of Oregon Cities down in Salem. Basically, eight hours of learning how to not get in trouble is what I took away from it. So good things, right, Amanda? So now I have a sticker here that has the Oregon Government Ethics Commission with their phone number, ready to go anytime needed. No, but it was good training. It was very informative. And yeah, so after that, I went home that evening and attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium meeting. There was several legislative agenda items that they're looking at going through Salem right now. No surprise, it's busy times down there. If anyone's interested on what those are and what that conversation was for brevity, I can provide it to you if you reach out. Related to kind of that legislative approach, on February 10th, I was invited by a community member to attend a NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness Legislative Roundtable, with our representative Courtney Neuron. And it was a group of folks who were able to speak about the importance of supporting mental illness legislation and supporting that. And I was able to share my story, as well as several other people shared theirs, about why it's important and why it should be a priority to have in our communities. On February 19th, I did not speak. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Spark Event at the Black Bear Diner. It was a good opportunity to get out there and mingle with our business owners and kind of be present and let them know that, you know, if they have any issues, that we are out here and we're listening. Later, that morning, actually, I was notified that there was a cancellation over at the community center for calling bingo. So I got roped into calling bingo at the community center yesterday afternoon. And let me tell you, it was a ball. Get it? I had several jokes like that at the bingo game. And I was told that I am not a comedian by one of the bingo players, who's also my neighbor's mom. But it was a really good time. And I'm also scheduled to take my two boys there in July to do it again and let the bingo players harass them for a little bit. In the last couple of weeks, since our last meeting, there's been some talk, there's been some consternation. I can see that the community is getting a little bit anxious about what's going on in the city and what we're doing. I'm doing my best to try to tamper that down a little bit, try to let this council breathe and get their feet under them as we move towards, working towards some solutions for the city, move towards sorting out some of the major issues that are facing this council that are left for us. So I just kind of want to restate that and restate that we are aware of the major issues. We are very serious about getting to work on those and moving forward on those. And we're just going to need a little bit of time to get our feet under us, to make sure that we're on the same page and that we're not all running in five different directions. So with that, there was, I think I had just one person had asked questions during public input. Deana asked if we would commit to a vote on urban renewal. I absolutely commit that any vote of the people, we must be responsible to that. And whether we would have a fair and balanced task force on a town center plan, I absolutely support that as well, making sure that, as was a topic of conversation tonight in citizen input, that we have a diverse group of people who are part of that, making sure that it's something that represents our community as a whole. So that's those answers to those questions. If I missed a question, if you had another question, please feel free to reach out. My email's on the website. I'm happy to chat with people. I've sat down with multiple citizens over the last couple of weeks and discussed a myriad of issues. And I was also told of a myriad of issues yesterday before the bingo game. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Member of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2025 City Council Meeting.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
A motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 4-0. We have no new business or continuing business tonight. Next up on the agenda is a public hearing. This is my favorite part. Tonight, we'll have a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 3187, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2024-2025. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, should I have announced the time yet? I'm just going through.
If I remember correctly, in the script, I think there's a part where you say the public hearing is now open.
It's pretty long, so. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. And then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. For those in the audience, please fill out a speaker card and provide it to the city recorder. They're over there. For those on Zoom, if you want to provide public testimony remotely during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press number nine on your telephone to notify the city recorder you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. When you begin your testimony, please state your name and address for the record. Or you may state that your address is as provided to staff. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision. The public hearing will be closed. Council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open at 9:18 PM. Assistant Finance Director Catherine Smith will provide a presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Catherine Smith, the city's Assistant Finance Director. Before you this evening is a request for budget supplemental to amend the fiscal year 2425 adopted budget. This supplemental request for a total of $965,000 consists of both requests to roll over budget authority from the prior fiscal year as well as some new requests. In greater detail as summarized on your screen, this request includes $159,000 for the reappraisal of funds from the prior fiscal year. While overall contracts have not been exceeded, a budget supplemental is necessary to carry forward the balance of the corresponding budget authority to the current year, often due to timing differences in when we receive those final billings. In addition, this budget supplemental also includes new requests in the amount of $489,000. This includes, for example, the community center siding project, which has shifted from a repair to a replacement, requiring additional funding. Finally, this supplemental also includes a new request that is fully reimbursable for oversight of the ongoing Lamont Water Supply Project in the amount of $316,000. Again, for a total budget supplemental request of $965,000. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Do any councillors have any questions?
I have a quick clarifying question, Mayor. Catherine, on the 100% reimbursable new requests for the $316,000, who is that reimbursed by? Is that reimbursed by the WSP?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Do we have any public testimony cards? No one on Zoom? Does any councillor need anything clarified at all? One last call. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to testify on the proposal? Please indicate so by raising your hand. Hearing no further questions and everyone having testified, I hereby declare the public hearing closed at 9:21 PM. Can I have a motion to approve the budget supplemental request?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3187.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? It passes 4-0. Is now, okay.
You got it.
Okay.
Good.
All good.
Always, she can't leave. She's got to keep me in line, so. She kind of looks at me like, what did I skip? Okay, is there any city manager business?
Do have one item for you, Mayor and council. We have, I've been approached by an individual, I think it's a broker, to someone that bought the Regal Cinema property.
the Regal Cinema property, and they are asking if the city has any interest in a long-term lease for a community theater/events center. So I bring that to you to ask you if you have any interest, because they're going to start their tenant improvements, I believe, in March or April. I think they're putting about $4 million into that facility, and so we don't have to give a yes right now. I have lots of questions about how much that would cost, how much space. It would have to go through our Parks and Rec Department, our Arts and Culture Council to give some kind of an idea of how we could program that space, what kind of revenue opportunities we would have. But it has to start with a conversation with council saying, you'd like me to investigate this.
For my purposes, I really would like you to investigate. We heard a lot of that during the campaign.
I would like a consensus from council that you'd like me to investigate this.
Sounds worthy of investigation.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the community's talked about it for a long time. I'd love to explore it and get information.
Well, it ties into the tourism plan, I think you saw that earlier tonight, and also the arts and culture heritage plan, so.
That's one.
All right, that's all I need. Thank you, I can start the conversation.
Is there any legal business?
None tonight, mayor, thank you.
With that, any objections to adjourning? Okay. City council's adjourned at 9:23 PM.